In progress. On January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I would like to call the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, let me start by saying Happy New Year to everyone. I am Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer, and I have the honor of opening the first meeting of the year until the board elects a chair and a vice chair. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, which I will lead, if you can all stand with me to honor the flag of our amazing nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the states of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You'll see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have thirty seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment is also taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners. Do we have any public comment in chambers?
Happy New Year all, Ellie Waller for the record. A newspaper article was recently put out. I may have missed the announcement of a new position. There is no disrespect to new staff coming in that will support as a PIO role or whatever Community Relations Management is, as well for the Sheriff's Department. I couldn't find any information using Community Relations Manager in the search bar for two thousand and twenty-two meetings. In the future, I think it would be appropriate to have an org chart for the county manager's office, just so we know who to contact. I'm still a little confused, and sometimes I add Amy so I can get directed to the right place. There is no disrespect for the staffing, but I believe community development is still short-staffed, and we need to revisit that this year. The outdated community plans are stale. We probably need a community-wide sewer plan, which has been brought up. I know we have Title Twenty update. The Tahoe area plan update probably needs to be brought to the table, at least for the memorandum of understanding based on the Lab Two Thirty-nine. That'll be a different comment. Agenda Five, information only for presentation from community development. When do you, as a board, believe we will fully accomplish the following? I'm sure it's not all in two thousand and twenty-three. This is from their chart. Develop a common vision, create a sense of place, protect and enhance property values, safeguard public health and safety, provide public facilities and infrastructure, improve economic development, protect the environment and conserve resources, set clear expectations. As I've stated, I think community development has a full plate. Add the responsibility of day-to-day implementation of the master plan. Douglas County Title Twenty, review development applications per the master plan and code. Have a customer service area, track issues of building and zoning, so on and so on. Administratively, hear minor development applications. Don't forget vacation home rentals and the policy updates there. One of the three of my written comments also requested that community development revisit age-old projects for compliance and necessity. My opinion, you as a board need to take a hard look at what brings funding to the county. Thank you.
Before we start that timer, good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Douglas County. I'm gonna, I've been looking at my posture.
Sir, can you state your name?
Oh, yes, yes. Jason Garrett Gibson. Because we have a new commissioner on board with an academic background, we are representing the Planetary Academic Federation today. And we have to have proper standing in front of council like we do in court, and we've tried to work with this microphone and with the tech department, and we can't seem to lift it. So I'm just gonna speak up with the risk of being misunderstood for yelling at council or committee. Because I don't want to hunch over anymore. So anyhow, thank you for starting that timer, Commissioner. Good morning again. Wanted to kick off the new year with some gratitude, a different attitude, get this party started with some acknowledgements to public works for lighting up the township. All those handyman and service people on them ladders in the Chill Factor. Carson Valley Inn for going above and beyond. People in the ranchos going out of their way to lighten up the holiday, to keep things fun. Carson City, the capital, wow. I haven't been home in thirty years, as you know. It was such a joy to walk downtown with your friends after a hot spring and see all of the lighting display and the creativity. Certainly makes a difference. Reno and the art installations in Reno, it was never that way when I was a kid. It's far out. Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe, fantastic. For all you folks who are paving our roads, keeping our lights on, thank you. The earth is happy with all the rain and the snow. So without further ado, also want to thank you for not laying down excessive gravel, because those people in the fancy cars get angry when those rocks are hitting the windshield and all that. We want to especially acknowledge the folks at the food bank and the vendors and the grocery stores that are providing that food to those of us who are working full-time to help our municipal government and social forums to lighten up some. And we don't get paid for this, so we need those food banks and those extra incentives. Shucks, just getting started.
Is there any more public comment in the chambers?
Ted Gaines for the record. Sorry I'm a little bit late. Neighborhood had a few problems I had to help with. I have some documents here I'm gonna put on record. I have a copy for each one of the commissioners. We're gonna do a clarification on some definitions today. Our county manager keeps saying I'm pushing out hearsay, hearsay, on the tower down at Topaz Lake, which is communication for law enforcement, life safety, and the whole thing. The first page of it is a permit that I might add I requested for on October sixth. Mr. Ritchie didn't send me this stuff until almost January because he never got it, because they didn't think I knew about it. Well, I had already got it from the fire department. On the bottom line, it's underlined. It's okay with me if it's okay with the fire department. There was no generator on this job. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar job required a generator, the wiring, the whole shoot match. It was not on the job. I also looked at it. Second page is a letter from the fire department inspector stating that the way to resolve this is either pull your permit and remove the generator off of it or install it like you're supposed to. So the generator was not there. They sent me, the county sent me an Acela report where actually it says the Lamont McCann went up there twice on the fifth and the sixth. Why would he go back on the sixth if he knows there's no generator there on the fifth, first of all? The signed card on the job don't reflect that. So somebody is putting false information out, legal and county information, which our legal people should look into. I want to compliment Lonnie Collins. She does have her permits for plant inspection. ICC verified it. I also asked them if it was okay for inspector to go on a commercial job with a residential certification. Absolutely not, residential only. So all these inspectors we got that are going on these jobs that Mr. Kate says were less than a hundred thousand basically aren't certified, aren't legal. Every commercial building we're walking into, and I've got a list of a bunch of them, which is a whole bunch of NRS violations on our building official. Our building official says they can use his certification. ICC, I'm gonna put it on record, says they can't use his certification. Now, I've got favoritism, I've got whatnot. Tom DeLair tries to tell me that the reason we couldn't get into Acela because too much information was leaking out. It's not leaking out, it's like a river. This is our information, we're entitled to it all. He didn't want me to have this information. Tim Davis did not want me to have this permit card. He had it the whole time. And the only reason I got it, I'm sorry, we'll finish later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more public comment in the chambers?
Jim Slade, Happy New Year to you all. Trying to start the year on a positive note as well. I would like to welcome Sharla Hales to the board. Commissioner Hales, I have been impressed with your dedication in attending most county commission meetings for the last year or more. That diligence will likely make you as well-prepared as any commissioner ever and sets a high bar for future candidates. That preparation, along with your long service on the school board, will allow you to step right into your role on this board with hardly any learning curve. By the way, I love it that you often bicycle to county commissioner meetings, although I have a feeling you did not today. County commissioners, of course, run by district, and I happen to live in your district, but as we know, commissioners are elected by the entire county and serve all county residents. While I barely know you, Ms. Hales, I have spoken with you and found you to be intelligent, thoughtful, well-informed, and balanced, and I'm sure you will bring valuable insight, perspective, and civility to the board. The county has many challenging issues to address in the coming years regarding finances, inflation, and wages, as well as ongoing concerns about residential growth and how it affects expenditures, infrastructure, traffic, and of course, our most valuable resource, our water, both its quality and quantity. I'm sure you've already given thought to these important topics and formed some ideas on how best to address them. I wish you, along with the rest of the board, the best in coming up with solutions that deal with these issues, which are vitally important to Douglas County residents. I trust that all of you will always work in the public interest for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Is there any more public comment in the chambers?
I'm glad you did. Frank Gerdige for the record. Got a couple of items I'd like to talk about. One is the term for the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee members is a two-year term, and if it isn't against state statute or county codes, I would like to see you guys possibly make that term a four-year term, because there's, I gotta say, there's three members on that committee that have been on that committee for, I think, over twenty years. And to have to go in and re-up every two years is kind of a bit of a pain. I mean, we do it, but, you know, it would be nice if we could just move that to four years. I mean, there's not a lot of turnover on that committee. As I say, there's three members that have been on there for over twenty years. I'm not one of them. Anyway, that's the one item I'd like to talk, that I've talked about. The other item is, is I'm here for the Ethics and Open Meeting Seminar, and unless something has substantially changed in the last four years, I can't think of anything that is a bigger waste of daylight than to sit here for an hour and a half listening to an ethics seminar. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comment in the chambers, Melissa, do we have any? Sorry, Eunice, do we have any?
Thank you. Eunice Gilce-Lenas for the record. At this time, we do have someone raising their hand online. Nancy, do you have opening public comment?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Nancy Gilbert for the record. Good morning, commissioners and members. Happy New Year to all of you, including our new member Sharla Hayes. As local constituents in Douglas County Township, we would like to open by reminding the board or the B O C C that over a thousand signatures from your constituents in the Tahoe Township were obtained in September and October of two thousand and twenty-two, asking the B O C C to remove V H Rs out of single-family residential neighborhoods and reallocated them towards tourist corridor by the casinos. I am asked here to ask the B O C C to take another look and consider the sheer volume of your constituents' efforts to to, uh, move V H Rs out of their private Tahoe neighborhoods. We ask you to broaden your perspective and consider how you could make alterations to the V H R program, such as, one example is Edgewood Villas. On-site hotel homes in the casino corridor is a good step. Why? Because traffic, parking, and density, nuisance, loss of values of neighborhood homes near V H Rs needs to be taken seriously because these are your constituents' issues. Consideration also of N Duts narrowing of Highway 50 to two lanes, along with increasing density by the V H Rs, seems to be a recipe for overall disaster, especially for those who live and work in Tahoe. I am asking again that, uh, without, uh, without another serious look, we are looking at a recipe for overall trashing of Tahoe and our neighborhoods for the financial gain of the V H R owners and, uh, the T O T tax for Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment online?
Eunice Gilzalinas for the record. Um, at this time, there's no more public comment.
All right. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. For possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to items on the agenda. At this time, I'm looking for a discussion or a motion from the commissioners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion from Commissioner Gardner and a second from Commissioner Tartanian. All those in motion say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have a five to zero vote. Moving on, approval of the previous minutes. For possible action, discussion to approve the draft minutes of the November 30th, 2022 special joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and the Audit Committee, and the December 1, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Do I have any discussion or a motion?
Move to accept.
I'm just going to say I need to abstain because I wasn't present or a commissioner at the meeting.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Noah Sedg and a second by Commissioner Gardner. And I have Commissioner Hales abstaining. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a four, zero, and one abstention. Moving on to the administrative agenda. This is my favorite item. For possible action, uh, discussion on the election of chairperson and vice-chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with NRS 244.070 and county code 2.04.025. Uh, before I open this up for discussion and for the purposes of a clean record, I'm going to recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we do this in two motions, uh, one for the chair and one for the vice chair. I'll first ask for discussion on a nomination of the chair. Then we'll open it for public comment. The public comment will be for the nomination of the chair and the nomination of the vice chair. So there will only be one public comment. I will then ask for further discussion from the commissioners and then ask for a motion. And then we can move on for the nomination of the vice chair. Of course, this is absolutely up to the commissioners as to if that's the route that they want to go. Um, but that is how we did it last year, and it does make for a clean record. So at this point, I'm going to ask for, uh, discussion among the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Rice.
Madam Chair, I am delighted and pleased with the way things have gone for the last year. I think that Mark Gardner has done a stellar job as our chairman, and I would move that we accept, uh, Mark Gardner as our chairman for the next, uh, next year.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I'm not sure exactly if Commissioner Rice made a motion. I think it was for discussion. So let's go ahead and, thank you, Commissioner Hales. Um, let's go ahead and just continue the discussion. Is there any further discussion from the commissioners?
I would agree partially with Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Rice. I think Mark's ran the meetings very, very well, as I've expressed. So I'm very disappointed that he hasn't followed the norms and procedures in allowing items to be put on the agenda that, um, have been followed through the norms and procedures. And I know this is going to be a, um, uh, what do you call it? A vote that's not going to matter, uh, because unless Mark votes against himself, you're going to be the new chair. Congratulations. But the norms and procedures, I've been told by the county manager, we have to follow. That's, that's what he said. But then he doesn't follow them when it doesn't suit them. So when I made a motion, when I gave him written request to put him, an item on the V H R issue on the agenda, which norms and procedure says he has to put on the agenda, he then went to the chairperson. The chairperson sent me a letter and said, "He's not going to do it now. The time is not right." Well, if that's, and then I went to the, um, the legal counsel, and legal counsel said, "Well, the chairman has a discretion of when it goes on the agenda." I said, "Where in the norms and procedures is that?" And it's not in there. He said, "Well, you got to change the norms and procedures." Well, I would think you'd have to change the norms and procedures to state that the chairman has a discretion of when to put it on there. Because if you don't, how long does the chairman have the discretion to hold it up? Well, my motion's been held up three months already. And I know why. I mean, there's, I'm not going to get into that now. Get into that later. But all of us on the board are only going to be here for a short period of time. This board is going to continue long after we're gone. It's going to have to represent this community. If this community feels it's okay for one person, the chairman, to determine what's going to be heard and when it's going to be heard, then go ahead and allow this to continue. But if the community believes that this board is made up of five people and we have a right to have each issue discussed at the time requested, then that shouldn't, then that shouldn't continue. So I'm not going to vote for Chairman, uh, Commissioner Gardner, although, as I said, I'm, I know he's going to be the chairman. I have no problem with him continuing as chairman. I met with him earlier. I just don't think it's right that one person should determine when something goes on the agenda or not. And if that is the case, then the norms and procedures should have been, uh, should have been amended.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Jason Gibson, on behalf of the House of Gibson. I took the liberty of pulling last year's record, the minutes, for February, no, this was January 6th, 2022, when Chairman Gardner was elected as spokesperson. He, um, thanks everybody for the trust that we placed in him. Wanted us to know that we will, he will work very hard to maintain openness and transparency in our county government and wants to assure the members of the public that we will be treating every member of the public with dignity, respect, and civility that they deserve. I would say that Mark has done that. He's done a good job. We've had our rough moments, him and I. But as a master of ceremonies, Mark, you do a darn good job at holding space. Your, uh, sense of humor, I would call it a trucker's sense of humor. I appreciate that. It's very practical. It, um, has a tendency to lighten up the vibe. I think you mean well, and I know that you have a great deal of experience. And I know that you're going to do the right thing when we talk about Douglas County as a whole. We have a new commissioner. She's got a background in academic, uh, experiences, and she's an attorney. She's likely going to be more receptive to the discovery of the law of time and the material that we provide this county for the last nine months. For the last nine months, I've worked diligently every day to try to reach out in some way in communicating with city-elect and public servants. And recently, we discovered and have already known that our emails were being trashed and redirected by Douglas County sheriffs and the county management. We know for a fact that Douglas County sheriffs have been involved in redirecting those emails.
Madam Chairman, this is.
Those courtesy notices are courtesy notices to keep the peace. We're doing our best to try to provide solutions and work to find answers to our problems. The, um, circumstances are such that there's at least a half a dozen of us whose emails are being firewalled. We can't get a response from the, um, chief of staff or the chief financial officer when it comes to public inquiry. And our public inquiries are being firewalled. And until recently, we were told that our email was being either neglected or totally redirected. And we know from our colleagues in I T that we have reason to believe that this is not the open transparency of government that we deserve or that we signed up for.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment from the chambers? Mr. Slade? Oh, Mr. Gaines.
Ted Gaines, uh, I read on item one. I believe this is going to be for chairman and vice-chairman. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Tartanian, and I agree with him 100%. I've been coming to a lot of these meetings, as Mr. Slade and some other people. There's been a lot of things put up to be put on the agenda. Mark Gardner don't pay any attention to any of us. Uh, I understand from the ex-commissioners that were here, they tried to put things on the agenda. He sidelined them, pretty much. Now, I have county-recorded minutes where Mark there has tried to bribe a head county official. Send the minutes to the meeting. He offered to pay his green fees if he'd come and play with him. I have records here where Wesley Rice, on our diesel tax, said, "We can't get it together. We can't get it together." Finally, he says, "Let's just send it to the ballot. Let the people decide, uh, on the diesel tax." And then on February 6th, that was on February 6th, on May 7th, ooh, I got the dates wrong. I am sorry. May 7th is when the diesel tax came up. January 6th is when he said, "Send it to the thing." June 20th, and I'll quote, out of the minutes of the meeting, "I told my wife, 'The next thing they're going to do is want to bring it to a vote for the people because they know that Douglas County doesn't pass anything.'" "I don't think that I got elected, that I, that I got elected so that I can pass the buck." So he voted on it because he knew it was going to get turned down in Douglas County. This kind of person does not belong as management or vice president or chairman of our board. He's made his mind up before it happened. Then he turned around and he sent 35 million up to the convention center with, on just the board's consent that they put up. When he knew it was going to go to the people, and he basically said he knew it was going to get turned down. So I would, there has been stuff for the generators brought to Mark Gardner, the generators and whatnot. He didn't put it on the agenda. We lost hundreds of thousands of dollars on these things. I seen them. I have umpteen violations, NRS violations, which Mark said, "We got to follow the NRS," when he rudely interrupted me talking to Mr. Ingles. Well, we've got several NRS violations in our building department. He don't care about that. As long as our county management wants to do whatever they want to do, that's where he's going to go. Now, I not beg you. I ask you to really think about what you're doing here. Mr. Gardner went into the utility department. They brought him water. They opened doors for him. Not a thank you once. You know what Mark Gardner told me? That was the first time I ever went in there. I was just elected to an official. Now, if you're rude, you're rude. Period. These commissioners have no spot in their life to be rude to the citizens and the employees of Douglas County. Now, that was a quote from Mark Gardner to me that he told me standing at that bench. First time I was in there, and I, uh, I was just elected as an official. Thank you.
Good morning. Shaniin Garen for the record. I just wanted to congratulate Sharla and echo the sentiments that, Mark, you have done a good job in the last year. I've appreciated the, um, the way that the meetings have been conducted. And it's not a reflection on any other commissioner's ability to serve as chair, but I certainly feel confident in your ability to continue in that position. And as a newly-elected official as county recorder, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Jim Slade. I think that overall Commissioner Gardner has done a good job as chairman, and I support his candidacy for another term. I do think it's appropriate to have a separate nominating and approval process for the chair and vice-chair. I think it makes no sense whatsoever and does not make for a clean record to only have one period of public comment. We have yet to hear who might or might not be nominated for vice-chair, whether there's going to be one person or two persons or whatever. So I think it's completely inappropriate not to have a period of public comment after there has been a nomination for or even discussion of vice-chair. Thank you.
Ellie Waller, I agree with a second period of public comment. I don't know that what you have to do as clerk treasurer to have that now changed, but I do agree. We don't know who is going to be put up, so how can we make comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment in the chambers?
Robert Trumbly, business owner with my wife, um, here in town. I think that it makes a lot of sense. Few people have been making sense here. We haven't been making a lot of sense up there recently. All right? Transparency is key. It's thrown around in politics all the time. Rarely is it done. And I'm not seeing it here either. And that's really disappointing, looking from here straight to Washington. We got some severe problems in our communities and our country. And this stuff starts here. This is bedrock foundation for our country. And we're seeing the similar things here as we're seeing in Congress. This is ridiculous. This isn't Congress. We need transparency here. We need to be honest about this stuff. I think Mark's done a great job. He could be more transparent. It's not that you're completely failing. You're failing in particular critical areas in our infrastructure and how we learn about what's going to happen and maybe be able to entice you guys to do it our way instead of these ways that have been happening. Sending money up hill up here to some of this stuff, these huge amounts of money we find out about sort of after the fact. We have a sleepy community. People aren't paying attention. And then we find out these things. Then you have a bunch of very irritated people coming in to see you. We're going to see more and more of that. Bunch of us are going to motivate our sleepy community into getting behind some transparency with you guys. We need you to do our work, not corporate work, not special interest work, our work to people. Please do that for us. We're going to hold you accountable for that, too. Congratulations, by the way.
All right. Thank you. Is there any more public comment in the chambers? Seeing none, do we have any online?
Thank you, Eunice Gilzalinas for the record. At this time, we do have someone raising their hand online. Nancy, do you have public comment, public comment for item number one?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record, and we will start your time.
Thank you. Nancy Gilbert for the record. I want to agree with one of the prior gentleman's comments and Commissioner Tartanian. I agree 100% with his observation. All five board members are equal, and they should have equal input in terms of what they want on the agenda. The board president cannot neglect other board members. It's equal representation. Nor can board members, or should they be allowed to decide ahead of time what they want on the agenda and then obfuscate other board members' ability to get items on the agenda. The constituents need open transparence and transparent representation by the commissioners. All board members or commissioners need to be heard, and I'd ask that that be considered seriously in terms of maybe read, uh, readjusting protocols so that all five board members have equal opportunity and rights to input on the agendas. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment online?
Thank you, Eunice Galzalinas for the record. At this time, we do not have any more public comment online.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Rice.
Madam Chair, I move that we reelect Commissioner Gardner as our chairman for the next year.
I'll second that again.
All right. At this point, we have a motion by Commissioner Rice to have Chairman, or apologies, Commissioner Gardner continue to serve as the chairperson, and it was seconded by Commissioner Hales. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
So we have a three to two vote. Congratulations, Commissioner or Chairman Gardner. I can go back to saying it like I have for the last year. At this point, we're going to move on to selection of a vice chair, and we will open it for discussion of the commissioners, from the commissioners.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes, Chairman Gardner.
So it's certainly been an eye-opening year, serving as chairperson, chairman of this board, and I can assure you that no decisions have gone without the input of the vice chair as well and staff. And so I've enjoyed working with the current, or the previous vice chair, Wes Rice, and would certainly be very pleased to have him continue in that position. So that's where I stand.
I support that. I support Commissioner Rice being vice chair.
Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Noasad or Commissioner Tartanian or Commissioner Rice?
Yes, I have some. It has been my honor and privilege to have served as vice chair for the past year. I think that Commissioner Gardner and I worked extremely well together, and I would disagree with some of the comments that have been made regarding being closed, but I would very much like to continue as his vice chair for the next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Is there any further discussion from the commissioners?
Ms. Perkins. In light of what the public has indicated in regards to the desire to have a public comment on the election of the vice chair, I would suggest that you go ahead and allow that to occur.
I agree.
Okay. We will open it up for public comment. In the chambers first.
Testing. There we go. Okay. Thanks again. That's another progressive step forward. I want to thank Eric for sending me Citizen Power, The Citizen Leadership Manual, The Art of No Blame Problem Solving. Well, that's a very high ideal, but we can certainly work towards that. By teaching citizens to be informed participants in government problem solving and giving all citizens the opportunity for public service, the citizens' campaign is laying a foundation for a new chapter in American democracy. So we have some dynamite, well, that's not an appropriate term. We have some progressive ideas with regards to our social form and how we can delegate the responsibility of problem solving. I know that the frustration that folks have is that there's so much to keep up on that is nearly impossible to do unless you're compensated. Many of us are not. We'd like to see the American Rescue Funds allocated towards five earth families. Those five earth families will serve as special interest groups or focus groups. They will focus on the solutions. They will be up to speed three days before the agenda is released so that they can dialogue and find, uh, discover the evidence and the facts necessary for decision-making. This will be a special opportunity online, not that government uses Facebook because of its transparency and its effectiveness and it's free, but we'll have a group, and anybody can drop into the roundtable discussion. It'll be casual, and this will happen three days before every Board of County Commissioners meetings. We're gonna be exploring Citizen Power and our 13-Moon Natural Law Peace Initiative. This is the most inspiring way that I can participate with you folks, and in the last meeting, everyone received one of these, and everyone who wants one will get one. Public works, social services, law enforcement. If you want a 13-moon form of intelligence or an organizing principle of a planner, this is certainly it. So again, this is the burners edition. This, there's a very conservative approach to natural law, but what is in this calendar is our great seal, the great seal with 13 stars, 13 arrows, 13 olive branches, 13 stripes that we're all pledged to. And yesterday, we began the Blue Eagle 13-Day Cycle of Vision. So the focus for the next 13 days is that transformative vision that puts us in sync with our collective will in not only maintaining our quality of life, but raising the bar so we surely, so that we feel good and we have fun in the art of governance, please.
Ellie Waller, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this issue. I'm glad you brought it forward. Thank you, Mr. Gardner and the rest of the commission. Thank you, Mr. Rice, for wanting to up your seat. I'm directing this directly to Mr. Rice. I'd like to see more information brought to this board about projects that are up in the Tahoe Township where the Valley folks do not understand that these projects do affect them as well, like the U.S. Highway 50 NDOT project. Thank you, Commissioner Tartanian, for going to that one meeting, by the way. And as well as the Latitude 39 project that was on a consent calendar. As you as a representative of the TRPA, I was glad to see the new executive director pull that. Again, I'm circling back now. I would like to see more Tahoe information brought to this board. Thank you.
Ted Gaines, I just read you out of the June 2020 meeting where Mr. Rice had, on one occasion, decided to let the people vote because he didn't have a diesel. And on another occasion, when the convention center come up, he was put here to vote. Now, you can't have it both ways. You're either gonna vote on all items, or you're gonna pass them along, but he knew that it was gonna get turned down. He wanted the convention center, so he voted. We have a new commissioner here, congratulations, that I know spent time with Mr. Gardner, go in the fire department, meeting a lot of the people in town, so she has been friends with Mark. And Danny Tartanian has tried to make this thing transparent. Like the other fellow said, there is no transparency. I can guarantee you that. I'm still trying to figure out how much money I'm gonna get paid for my information I requested they won't give to me. Danny's trying to be transparent. I think we need a change in this board. We need to get it, some of the people up there that have tried to put motions up and got rejected for them in that place, so they'll know to accept the motions or help accept the motions that are there. My feeling is we need transparency. I was, I think it's silly to go with the status quo when so many people are having complaints. I've been coming here for four years, as Mr. Slade has, so we know about the transparency of this. I would like to see Danny Tartanian get a shot at it just because he's trying, and he's trying to protect the county as in the 802-7 Act that the county tried to change to take the electrical inspections away from the things. He's in here for the county. Mr. Noasad's trying to be here for the county. So we need to consider who we're gonna put on our board to be management of this thing. Thank you.
Jim Slade. I'll try to stay on topic, which I, as I understand, is what we're all always supposed to do, but doesn't always seem to happen. Although, having said that, I must say to Mr. Gaines that I'm glad you've been here for the last four years, and I have, as you noticed also, but then there were the 18 years before that that I was also coming to these meetings all the time, so don't forget that. Something Chairman Gardner said just a few minutes ago gave me great pause. He said something to the effect, I'll have to listen to the recording, but he said something to the effect, "Oh, everything that comes, everything that we get, decide on, I discuss with the vice chair and staff." That is part of the problem, not part of the solution. That is not the way it should be. It should be with all the other commissioners that things get decided upon. I do think we need a change in the status quo. I don't think it's healthy to have the same pair running things for consecutive years. Mr. Noasad has been vice chair before. Ms. Hales, all I'm sure she would be competent, is new to the board. I think we should consider Mr. Tartanian as the vice chair. I think he should be sitting next to Mr. Gardner and helping to decide the direction of things. I think it is time for a change. Mr. Tartanian has been on the board for two years. I think it's his turn to be vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. More public comment?
Robert Trumbly again. I agree with that. Change is good. Repetition can be, become stale and become a problem in any entity, and it can happen here, and it has happened here. Looking, my experience with it, watching the Airport Advisory Committee in the last couple of years, this little institution here let that deteriorate into utter chaos, in my opinion. So we're hoping that gets resurrected, but when it gets resurrected, you guys have to listen to these people that you've chosen to feed you information, and for a couple of years, many years now, that hasn't happened with that particular institution, the Airport Advisory Committee. And now I see that, as I get more involved with this stuff, I see that more and more in all other facets of our governance here. So having the same individuals, and not to disparage these two fellows, Mark and Wes have done really good work over their careers in this giving to our communities, and I'm sure a lot of people appreciate it, but that doesn't, leaves a lot to be wanted. We are seeing things going sideways in a lot of different areas. There are sheriffs, money going out that we don't have really, and we're not maintaining our roads, and a lot of us see this stuff happening at a ground level around us and then hear about all this money that's being spent and directed not in our favor, and we wonder what's going on with our managers, you know? Mr. Cates, you guys are directing, having a lot of responsibility, and we're struggling, a bunch of us, to understand why you're not managing it as well as we think you should be. Now, I don't know enough about it to argue and get on anybody's butt about it, but I do know you guys hold the purse strings to a lot of this stuff, and we, as a community, have to start understanding a little better the challenges that you guys have been up against trying to make these decisions and why you made some of them. And it's a lot to digest for a lot of common people. You guys are in a pretty particular position to help us understand that, and without transparency, it isn't happening, and then it starts to garner mistrust. And then people start nodding, not trusting our governance, and then it's, it's a cancer sorta, and we can't, man, you guys can't let that happen. It's happening at Washington. It's happening a little bit here. It happens everywhere. You guys hold the keys to be transparent and let us know what's going on, and some of that is switching over and having a little turnover so people don't think it's one, you know, whether it is or isn't, if people speculate it is, you've lost the narrative if they just believe it, even if it's not true, right? So let's work on that. Maybe we should have Danny do this stuff. It's a good change. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more public comment in the chambers, do we have any online?
Eunice Galzalinas for the record. At this time, we do have someone raising their hand. Nancy, do you have any public comment?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Thank you, Nancy Gilbert for the record. I agree with the other gentlemen's speaking about needing more transparency and needing change in the status quo. We need new blood in terms of who's running the commission. I, too, heard the same thing from Commissioner Gardner, saying that he goes to the vice, he relies on the vice chair. I didn't hear him say that he was talking to all of the board member, or the commissioners in terms of his, his analysis or his thought process. It looks like a clique, and it doesn't look good. I think that there needs to be new blood, and I think that either Commissioner Tartanian or Noasad should be elected as vice commissioners, vice chairs, and let's, let's get some change here because it does seem like there's some, doing the same thing over and over and getting complaints doesn't seem to be the best strategy for Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment online?
Eunice Galzalinas for the record. At this time, there is no more public comment.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion, possible motion. Commissioner Tartanian?
First of all, I'd like to thank the people that had mentioned my name. I, and particularly considering, at least two of you were not my biggest fans when I got elected, so I hope that's because I'm trying hard to work and be open and, and work with everybody. I know there's some issues I probably voted against you on, but at least I'm giving you reasons why and trying to be transparent about it. I think the comments that were made where there should be some checks and balances on the board is important. I don't believe I'd be the right person. I think you need someone with a little more experience. Commissioner Noasad has already been a vice chair. I think he'd be a good check and balance, wouldn't have to worry about learning all over again, and I would support him as a vice chair.
Any further discussion from the commissioners? Commissioner Rice? Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Hales?
I'll just state that I appreciate the sentiments that have been shared. I just have a different idea about how to address them.
I'll make a motion if you, so, if you're so open to that at this time.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. I move at this time for the reelection of Wes Rice as vice chair of the Board of Commissioners for the 23-year.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Gardner and a second by Commissioner Hales to have Commissioner Rice Commissioner Rice serve the 2023 year as the vice chair. All those in motion, please say, is there further discussion? All those in motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a three to two vote. Congratulations to our 2023 chair and vice chair. So this is my favorite part of the meeting, where I get to hand it over to Chairman Gardner. Chairman Gardner, do you need to take a short break, or are you ready to go?
I am good. I'm good. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Noasad?
Well, with the election of Chairman Gardner and Chairman Rice, I think I've nothing but to say there we're back to a three-two balance.
So before we move to item number two, I do have just a couple of comments based on some comments that have been made. First of all, I did want to apologize for not standing during the Pledge of Allegiance. For those of you who are not aware of it, I slipped on some ice last Wednesday and fractured my lower, or the lower part of my tibia, or fibula, I'm sorry, my fibia, fibula. And so I'm in a cast boot and unable to put any pressure on that. So anyways, for those of you might have noticed that I did not stand during the Pledge of Allegiance, it was not out of disrespect for the flag of the United States. Secondly, I'd say that I appreciate the commissioner's selection, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as chair again, especially with the fact that I don't have to now move my chair because I have difficulty walking. So anyways, with that, let me, let me clarify some comments that Mr. Slade made because I think some of his, some of my comments may have taken, been taken out of, out of context. What I meant to say is that I do not act in an arbitrary manner. Okay? So when items are brought forward by commissioners, that is not a sole decision whether or not to put it on the board agenda or not. I confer with legal counsel. I confer with the vice chair because the vice chair and I are always involved in the process of setting the agenda for the upcoming meeting. So that's why that, that, that process takes place. So I, I don't make those decisions arbitrarily. I rely on staff's direction, and I rely on comments from the vice chair when those items are, are brought, brought forward. Commissioner Tartanian and I had a conversation a couple of days ago, and I indicated that I take no issue with his proposal and what he wishes to bring before the board. It's a difference of opinion on process, on process. And let's talk about that process for a minute. Okay? He wishes to change a particular clause in the Vacation Home Rental Ordinance. And I don't have any problems with that whatsoever. It's, it's something that I feel this board needs to hear. However, we need to hear it, in my mind, we need to hear it with the entire proposal as the Vacation Home Advisory Board hears it and brings it forward to us. Now, the process is, is that the Vacation Home Advisory Board is responsible and is in the process now of looking at that particular code and making revisions to it, of which Mr. Tartanian has a specific proposal that he wishes to have involved in that. I don't have any problems with that. It should go through the Vacation Home Advisory Board, and they are hearing that. After it goes through the Vacation Home Advisory Board, it then goes to the Planning Commission for their weighing in on it. That's the process the county has adopted. After the Vacation Home Advisory Board brings that forward, and it's vetted by the Planning Commission for their recommendations, then it will come to this board. Is that correct, Mr. Ritchie? That process?
Thanks, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Yes, we are required to change ordinances through at least the Planning Commission, and then we come to the board for a vote as, as an ordinance change.
That, folks, is the most open, transparent method of doing that, rather than coming directly to here. And that's all I've asked Commissioner Tartanian to do, is submit his proposal in writing to the Vacation Home Advisory Board, which will then accompany, with all the other recommendations that they have, will then go to the Planning Commission, which will then come to us. The longer that process takes to get it to them, to get it to the Planning Commission, to us, the longer it's going to take. That's all I've asked. Okay? I think that's an important thing. So anyways, you've talked about it.
I, well, I'm requesting my right to respond to your statements because I did not talk about it. I said I'd talk about it later. If you want to get into the middle of it, I have the right to do so.
Very good. I'll listen.
Great. First of all.
Chair.
It, Mr. Chairman stated that he spoke with legal counsel chairman and the vice chairman and the county manager on determining what's on the agenda. Where, Mr. Chairman, is it in the norms and procedures that that is a process you're supposed to use? It's nowhere. The norms and procedures state, any, any, not the chairman, any commissioner can request, and I am to be put on the agenda by giving written notification to the manager. Where does it say on the agenda that manager has a right to stop it? Mr. Legal Counsel, where on the, in the norms and procedures does it state that the tradition carries weight over the written norms and procedures? It doesn't. Now, I've sat back here, and I've listened to this, and I wasn't going to get into this, this VHR issue until later because that's where the issue is. But this is all a farce. Everybody listening, this is a farce. And when you talk about transparency, it's anything but transparent. A year and a half ago, I went to two of the people on the VHR Advisory Board, and I discussed my proposal with them. Neither of them were interested in it. Last June, when it was supposed to come back before the board, Assistant Manager Jennifer Davison told me the advisory board's not interested in it. In September, when it still wasn't put on the board, the person in charge of the VHR program, Ernie Stel, 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 Ernie, said that they were not interested in it. Only after I demanded it get put on the agenda did they say, oh, well, now we're interested in it. Well, three of the five VHR Advisory Board members are VHR owners. One of them in Glenbrook, in Glenbrook where I'm trying to get them banned. Who in, who in their right mind thinks they're going to look at this impartially after saying they don't care about it for a year and a half, and we should wait for it, and they're going to give us an answer? And let me, and finally, Mr. Legal Counsel, which I've never said anything negative about you before, but it's completely wrong when you say, well, it has to go to the advisory board and the planning commission to change in ordinance. When we were first on the board, when I got on the board in February, this matter came to us, we voted on it. We voted on it before it went to the planning commission. It might have went back to them, but we voted on it first. That's what I asked with my proposal. Nothing more, nothing less. This isn't transparent. All this is, is a show. You're going to have the advisory board with three of the VHR members wanting to, and saying that they're not interested in my proposal, come out now and say, oh, well, we investigated it, and we, we just don't think it's the right thing. It's a farce. Don't tell me it's transparent. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Hales. And I do, I do enjoy, by the way, saying that, okay? Welcome to the board.
I guess I should say Chair Gardner.
I haven't had an opportunity to do that yet.
Well, thank you.
So, so welcome to the board, and we look forward to your input.
Thank you, Chair Gardner. I'll, I'll get the lingo right. I'm a little nervous about this conversation. I feel like it's gone beyond discussion of the officers for next year, and I do believe that a discussion of norms and procedures would be good after it's agendized and we can properly talk about it.
Thank you for your observation.
Mr. Chairman.
We'll move to item number two then.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Noasad, do you have something to do with the chairperson or the election of the vice chairperson?
No, I don't have anything to say about you.
Well, then, we've already discussed, we've already, we, we, we need to hold the conversation to that.
Thank you.
Okay. I did, because I was responding to some accusations that were made towards myself, and I'm just doing that through clarification, and perhaps I should have refrained from doing that.
And to, to use that logic, when we talked about the issue of not getting anything on the agenda that we asked for, the reason is, we have to have it go before those two boards before it comes to us. Why can't we originate that?
I, I agree with what Commissioner Hales has observed, is that we're beyond, we're going outside of the scopes of that item number one. But we will have a, I will ask staff to bring forward the norms and procedures for the January 19th meeting, and we will discuss all of this at that time. Okay? Would that be sufficient, folks?
It will be on the agenda then.
Yeah. 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 Right? Okay. We'll go to item number two. Okay. For possible action, discussion on the election of a chairperson of the Douglas County Liquor Board in compliance with NRS 244.350. Is there any discussion by the board in regards to that? And our Sheriff Coverley, newly re-elected Sheriff Coverley, sits on that board as well. He's one of the six members that serve on that board. So Sheriff Coverley, you have, you have discussion on this?
Thank you, Chairman Gardner. I would just like to suggest that historically, and it's worked in, good in the last four years, that I've been on the liquor board, to have the, the chairman of the B O C C also be the chairman of the liquor board for continuity of the meeting and moving things forward. I think that's a, a good way to go. I don't see any reason to change that. So I would support having Mr. Gardner be the chair of the liquor board as well as the B O C C.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion before we go to public comment? This is an action item. Okay? We'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment here in chambers?
Jason Gibson, on behalf of the House of Gibson, December 15th, we brought to the board's attention that there was a death in the parking lot of P&amp;J Liquor due to a fentanyl overdose. That was something that followed an incident that we had about six weeks prior to that, where we witnessed a young Caucasian skinhead threaten the owner of one of the liquor stores over 88 cents that he was going to shank the clerk in front of four of us. For the last nine months, we've informed the board that we would have a sharp eye on any further development of the liquor industry in the ranchos where I live. We have about 3,500 people out there, and we have three liquor stores within a stone's throw. And now, the board and Douglas County Sheriff is going to bring in a fourth. I cannot believe how much alcohol is being consumed in the ranchos. It is unreal. I brought to the board's attention the Navy SEAL who approached us, who said that, well, first of all, he has a severed foot, and he's got more broken bones in his body than he can count, and he says he can't get the service that he needs through the VA, that he needs alternative healthcare, and they won't allow him to get massage or allow him to utilize organic alternatives to pain. So he approached us for answers because he's drinking way too much, and he doesn't want to be an alcoholic, but that's what alleviates his discomfort. Now, in the last meeting, we discovered in the roll-in, which is a tactic used by the board to roll in hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars without due process and public input, items that should be open for discussion or should be understood by the public way before they are endorsed. But when you only have three days to address 500 pages, it's totally unreasonable that volunteers would be properly informed before the board to actually bring constructive solutions as opposed to the creative or the, the consistent complaint and the agitation and the abrasion that we have in these meetings. So in the last meeting, we found $200,000 allocated to law enforcement to eradicate and fight hemp cannabis. Hemp crack cannabis is no longer on your controlled substance. It's been decriminalized by the people of Nevada. You've been waging a drug war and benefiting and banking at $57 billion a year since 1972, and you want to expand it. You want to build another jail facility. Now, if I was a reasonable commissioner, I'd do a little homework and find out what is this all about. The first thing you're going to find out is that Nevada incarcerates more people than NATO.
Okay. 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 Once again, I'll remind the public, we're in the discussion on the election of a chairperson for the Douglas County Liquor Board in compliance with NRS 244.350. Are there any other further public comments here in chambers? Since seeing none, Ms. Gil Salinas, do we have anybody online who wishes to offer public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Yunes Gil Salinas for the record. At this time, we do not have any public comment online.
Very good. I'll bring it back to the board for possible motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rice.
Mr. Chair, I would move that you continue to be chairperson of the Douglas County Liquor Board in compliance with NRS 244.350.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Hales to elect myself, Mark Gardner, as the chairperson of Douglas County Liquor Board in compliance with NRS 244.350. Since seeing you're ready to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. We'll now go into, are, are we good, by the way? Commissioners, do, do you need a break or anything? Okay. Very good. I know that there's a lot of members of the audience here that are here at the specific request to participate in this next presentation. Nevada Ethics and Government Law Training will be provided by Ross Armstrong, Executive Director. Mr. Armstrong is here in chambers, and so I, and you, I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation as well? Okay. So, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll get the PowerPoint going, and then we'll start. I am Ross Armstrong. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada Commission on Ethics. I started my public service career about 11 years ago as a special prosecutor for the Attorney General's Office in rural Nevada, from Perump to Hawthorne was my territory. And then I served in the Attorney General's Office for a couple of years, which led me down the street in front of Judge Young and then Judge Gibbons for a whole bunch of cases. And then I was in executive roles at the Department of Health and Human Services. I joined the Nevada Commission on Ethics a little over a year ago. And so this is our ethics law training, and I will toss it out. So there are going to be some times when I'm going to ask for thoughts and comments, questions from the commissioners and members of the panel. So I would just start out with, what are there certain, when I say ethics, are there words or terms that come to mind for you first off?
Commissioners?
281A.
Someone knows our specific statute? That's good. A lot of times we hear things like integrity and trust. I was training one city, and someone in the back yelled out bribes, and I thought, oh, you must be from the attorney's office because you're thinking worst-case scenario right off the bat. And so I think we all have a pretty good general sense of what ethics are. In a lot of ways, we could maybe can see if something is, is bad ethics or shady, right? We can identify that maybe easier than we can identify or define ethics. What we're going to be talking about today is specifically the Nevada Ethics Law, which is narrower than maybe kind of a general definition of ethics.
Excuse me, sir. Could you speak into that microphone?
Oh, sure. I can get, is that better?
That's better.
Okay. And then let me see if I can put those down. There we, there we go. In our legislative declaration, there is a sentence, we're going to go into a lot of details about the ethics law, but if you remember this one thing from our legislative declaration, it's not an enforceable part of our ethics law, but I think is helpful, is "A public office is a public trust and shall be held for the sole benefit of the people." And if you can remember that, you're going to be able to stay within the boundaries of the ethics law pretty well. For the sole benefit of the people, not for the sole benefit of the people in government... of the people in government, or friends of the people in government, or family of the people in government, but for the sole benefit of the people. And so, if you remember that, you're going to be, you're going to be able to maintain compliance with the ethics law pretty well. There we go. As the Commissioner stated, NRS 281 is where our ethics law lives in the state of Nevada. We also have an administrative code. That administrative code is really about kind of the procedures of the Ethics Commission. So if you find yourself asking for an advisory opinion, or you find yourself in an ethics case, that's really going to be the procedure. But all our rules are found within that section of the NRS 281A. A little bit about the Ethics Commission, it's an eight-member commission. Four are appointed by the governor, four are appointed by the legislature, to insulate it from partisanship. No more than four members can be from the same party at any given time. In addition, no more than four members can be from the same county. There have to be a certain number of former public employees and a certain number of lawyers. The Ethics Commission does issue legal opinions, and so it's helpful to have attorneys there. In addition, no members of the commission may be politically active in a party or campaign, again, to insulate it from accusations of partisanship. The commissioners give up that part of what can be some of their, you know, their former lives. We have some former elected officials on the commission, and so they are not active in any political party or campaign during their term. We have three major functions of the Nevada Commission on Ethics. The first one is education and outreach. I'd much rather be here presenting to you all today than to be here interviewing a bunch of your staff about an ethics case, right? And so, our number-one goal is to educate and provide outreach about Nevada's ethics law. We have about 145,000 people in the state of Nevada that are covered by Nevada's ethics law. And so, it's great to do this. We're trying to get more training resources so that we can help all of those folks. Education outreach is our number-one goal. In addition, we provide advisory opinions related to Nevada's ethics law. All public officers or employees can ask the Ethics Commission a question about their own behavior. You can't have folks asking about like the behavior of the person in the cubicle next to them in the office, right? It has to be about your own behavior, and it has to relate to the ethics law. And then we can go ahead and provide a confidential advisory opinion to help you navigate the ethical waters. And then the third one is, we receive and process complaints. So anybody can file an ethics complaint, and then we go through a process to determine if an investigation is warranted and an ethics case should begin. Why do we have ethics laws? Mostly, it's because of President Nixon. His Watergate scandal in the 70s triggered ethics laws across the country. So the federal law was enacted in 1978, and then Nevada's ethics law was started in 1975. It's gone through some changes over that time, but the Watergate scandal in the 70s really triggered. I think there's maybe three or four states that still don't have ethics law or commission, but for the most part, across the country, we have ethics laws. So who's covered under the Nevada Ethics Law? You've heard me say the term "public officers" or "employees" a bunch of times. There are two separate definitions within the ethics law. Public officers are a position that's established in the Constitution, or your county code, or somewhere else in the Nevada vice statutes. It's a position established by law. And then, public employees are essentially anyone who works for a public officer. So all of your county staff are public employees. But if you have a county code that says there shall be a director of public works, right? That director of public works is a public officer, because it's established in your county code. And then, in some cases, we have jurisdiction over former public officers and employees, and we'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation. Nevada has cooling-off limitations. And so, for one year after you leave public service, there are some restrictions on who you can work for and the type of activity that you can do. Who's not covered under the ethics law? Private individuals. If you're, think that your neighbor parks unethically, we can't handle that at the Ethics Commission. That's not within our jurisdiction. We sometimes also get complaints or questions about private businesses or companies. In some cases, individuals will contact us, and they'll say, "This entire county commission, this entire city council, you know, or this entire state agency is unethical." We don't have jurisdiction to declare an entire agency unethical, right? Or investigate an entire agency. It's specific individuals who are public officers or employees who make up those agencies. And in order for us to proceed, we need to know who exactly is alleged to have violated the ethics law. We don't have jurisdiction over the judiciary, right? There's a commission on judicial ethics that handles that, or judicial discipline that handles the judiciary. We also don't have jurisdiction over federal government employees. So when I talked about about 140,000 folks covered by Nevada's ethics law, that's state, county, city, some of those interesting, like improvement districts, or, you know, the Nevada system of higher education, some of those other governing bodies that are Nevada, Nevada public officers. We also don't have jurisdiction over volunteers. So if you have like a Parks and Rec intern, they're not going to be covered by the ethics law unless they're getting paid. And then advisory committees. So an individual who's serving in an advisory capacity, is just purely advisory, is not covered under the ethics law. That's a really tricky one, because all of our different parts of government treat advisory groups a little bit differently. Like, some planning commissions have the authority to approve and deny rezoning and other things, and others just have the ability to recommend to the main city council or the county commission that an action take place. And so, when we get questions about an advisory committee, we always have to dig down and see what does that body actually do to determine if they're advisory or not. So what type of conduct falls under the jurisdiction of the Nevada Ethics Commission? It has to be within the last two years. We have a two-year statute of limitations. And then it has to be some sort of conduct that's specifically prohibited by the chapter. So we get some complaints and some questions where folks are just unhappy with a decision their government made, right? And they think it's an unethical decision. But unless it's violating some specific rule in our law, it's not going to be something that the Ethics Commission is going to take up. Specifically, in our statute, we do not get involved in personnel matters. So if there's allegations of discrimination or harassment that are heard before the EEOC, or the Nevada Equal Rights Commission, we don't handle those cases, or other employment-related grievances. Many governments have, you know, like appeal rights or grievance processes for their county employees. We don't get involved in any of those. And then, sometimes we have local agencies have a policy, or even, you know, code of ethics that is local to their agency. If it doesn't line up with the violations or the requirements of 281A, then we're not going to get involved. We don't have jurisdiction over that. So you might have, you know, a city council that says, "Part of our city council ethics is we treat each other with respect, we follow chain of command," those types of things, not requirements of the Nevada Ethics Law. And so, if there's a violation of that, we would not get involved. Is there a question about who's covered by the ethics law? Okay. Before we jump into the specific requirements of the ethics law, there's one term that is key, is kind of foundational to understanding the ethics law. And that is, what is a commitment in a private capacity? The ethics law establishes this, it's kind of like this magical list of relationships that automatically creates a conflict of interest. And so, those six types of relationships that can cause a conflict of interest include your spouse or domestic partner, a member of your household, someone within the third degree of consanguinity. And so, if you've had to deal with, you know, a will or some other issue of consanguinity, a flashback to a consanguinity chart, basically, you are your zero degree of consanguinity, and you go out from there. So your parents are your first degree of consanguinity, and there's a whole chart you follow to figure out if you're within that third degree of consanguinity, or affinity. So if you have, you know, your father-in-law would be within that, within that affinity area. And then, an employer, right? We have a lot of folks who have a private employer outside their government service. They have a commitment in a private capacity. If you have a city council member who is employed by the local coffee shop, they have a commitment in a private capacity to that coffee shop. If you have a substantial and continuing business relationship, that will also be a commitment in a private capacity. And so, say if that city council member owns part of that coffee shop, right? They're business partners, and anybody who that coffee shop does business with will be within that commitment in a private capacity. And then, because we always love a little bit of vagueness in the law, we have this other category called substantially similar, which says, if it looks substantially similar to those other five, that also counts as a commitment in a private capacity. And so, that can be tricky, right? You're like, "We invited the ethics guy here to come train us, and he's telling us there's this, like, basically this subjective category that can create a commitment in a private capacity." What I can tell you is that the commission, in its rulings, have had some examples. And hopefully, that helps you understand what a substantially similar situation might be. And so, what has been found to be substantially similar? If you are on a nonprofit board, right, that's substantially similar to a substantial and continuing business relationship, right? They're not necessarily employing you, but you have a fiduciary duty to that particular board, just like you might to someone you're in business with. And so, that can create a commitment in a private capacity. It's found a rural firefighter had a substantially similar relationship to an employer, even though that fire department was volunteer, right? He wasn't paid by them like an employee, but it was substantially similar enough to create a conflict of interest that he needed to be aware of. And then, in some cases, you might have some friendships that are closer and more longstanding than those folks within the third degree of consanguinity, right? The ethics law doesn't care if you like your family. If they're within the third degree of consanguinity, it creates a conflict of interest. If you have friends that are substantially similar to family, that can also create a conflict of interest. And so, that's just something to understand, that term you see sprinkled throughout the entire ethics law. And so, that's a foundational thing to remember. It's not bad that you have someone that you have a commitment in private capacity to. We bring our lives to government. You don't give up your humanity just because you've chosen public service, and the ethics law understands that. But if you have one of these relationships that's going to come into intersection with your public duty, you're going to want to be thinking about the ethics law and how to approach that scenario. Questions about commitment in a private capacity?
I have a question. What about us?
Okay. I'm sorry, but this is not a, I'm sorry, but this is not an area that this is.
This is part of the bottom line, sir.
I'm sorry, but, Mr. Armstrong, please proceed.
Thank you. All right. What I have found.
Just a minute, Mr. Armstrong. So, on presentation-only items, I guess I should have prefaced that. But on presentation-only items, this is not for open dialogue with the public, and it is not a question-and-answer period for the public. It is a question, it's a presentation to the board, and a question-and-answer period for the board to the presenter. Does not, is not in violation of NRS, as I understand. So anyways, thank you for a moment, and you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I like to put things in categories. And so, when I came from, you know, six years of doing HHS work and not legal work every day, I came to the Ethics Commission, which is much more legal and technical. And so, for me, it was easier to put all the different ethics rules into three buckets. Improper disclosures, I'm sorry, improper benefits, disclosure and abstention, and cooling off. And so, we're going to go each, over each one of those buckets. The improper benefits bucket is the biggest, and so will take the most time. And then, because of the nature of a county commission, disclosure and abstention is also something to be aware of. So we're going to start the improper benefits bucket with this video, the infamous Case of JoJo Bear. And you may see some items that you may think could be unethical. And so, we'll watch the video and then go over it once the video has concluded.
Joanne, hey, hi.
Hey there, new treasurer.
Aw, I just wanted to say thanks for supporting me.
You're going to be great.
Hey, are those the bottles of wine that were donated for the auction? You need me to help you bring those in?
Oh, no. I'm taking those home. Those are really old.
Are those gift cards and candles for the auction, too?
Oh, yeah. They got dirt on them. And also, that candle smells bad. Hey, do you want a bottle of wine and a bad-smelling candle? Here you go. You're on the board now. We're going to make a great team. Bye.
So, Joanne, listen, I'm not so sure PTA members should be taking donated stuff for themselves.
You are absolutely right.
I am so glad you understand.
It's just, you know, I put a lot of time into the PTA. I mean, it's almost a full-time job, except that it's not, because I don't get paid. And sometimes, I guess in a moment of weakness, I might, you know, order a muffin on the PTA credit card. I guess I, I feel like I deserve it.
Aw. Oh, don't cry, Joanne. I'm sorry I said anything. Hey, one muffin ain't nothing.
But it is, Linda. One muffin is stuffin'. Do you think I'm a bad person, Lindlin?
No, no, JoJo. Are you kidding me?
Should we split it, or, I mean, we don't want to use this, right?
You know what? Let's put it on the PTA card. We earned it.
If you say so. By the way, here are the invoices for everything. I need my new treasurer to approve all the purchases and enter them into the spreadsheets. You think you could do that?
Yeah, sure. I'll start spreading the sheets. Huh, these science kits cost $40 each. Let me see how much these things cost on the website. Science Wow products. Oh, Joanne's buying them retail. That's why they're so expensive. Why would she do that? Science Wow is a division of JoJo Bear Publishing. Wait a minute. JoJo Bear.
I call him Bear, and he calls me JoJo.
Oh, my goodness. Joanne and her husband own the company that makes the science kits. This is bad. This is JoJo Bear-y bad.
All right. So what we saw in the case of JoJo Bear is a couple of examples, what could be potentially ethics law violations, right? We have the, using the old wine and the bad-smelling candles that were donated for the purpose of the PTA and taking them home. As a former prosecutor, I also checked off all the boxes for the crime of embezzlement, right? And so, just because something is or isn't a violation of the ethics law, there could also be other legal implications, which is why I always want to check with your, check with your legal counsel. We also saw, you know, using the PTA money to buy the muffins, the muffin lunch, and then, of course, shoveling that sweet, sweet PTA money into contracts for yourself and your own science company. And so, we saw some examples. In this case, the Ethics Commission would have no jurisdiction, right? Because PTAs are private nonprofits, and so they're not public agencies. But if all this conduct was being conducted by a government official, we absolutely would be taking a look at the case. In the improper benefits bucket, there's a, there's basically a three-step formula. There's little nuances in each of the requirements, but it's that you're using your government position to create a benefit, and that benefit is for yourself. It is for someone that you have a commitment in private capacity to, so that magical list of relationships, or it's the result of a gift or a loan. And so, we'll start with the whole idea of a gift, because one of the first ethics questions, especially, we just had like the holidays, people get nervous about what gifts they can and cannot accept. So we'll watch a quick snippet, and then I'll talk about Nevada gifts.
This is insane. Wow, look at all this stuff. I want the muffins, and whatever this is.
Well, thank you, police union.
What are you doing?
I'm not working today. I'm going to have a celebratory glass.
You can't. You're only allowed to consume gifts under $75, according to county ethics rules.
You're kidding?
No, I've been reading up on them.
Here, have a muffin.
What do I do with this? It's open.
Now, when I'm training in front of a large agency, I'll ask, "What's Nevada's gift limit, right? What's the value?" And it'll start to sound like an auction, right? There's different values being screamed out from different parts of the training room. And the Nevada Ethics Law does not have a specific gift value limit, right? So there's not a specific number that triggers an ethical violation. Instead, what the Ethics Commission looks at is, you can't receive a gift that tends to improperly influence a reasonable person to depart from the faithful and impartial discharge of their duties, right? Again, more, more super clarity from the law, which is why you brought, you know, the training guide to come explain the law, and I give you kind of these mushy, mushy definitions. So as an example, let's say you have a friend from high school, and you go out to lunch six times a year. Sometimes you buy, sometimes he buys. When he buys you lunch, right, that's a gift. But I don't think a reasonable person's going to say that that gift is going to likely make you depart from the faithful discharge of your duties, right? That's just part of society and how we interact with each other as humans, right? We have these occasional gifts, if there's a Christmas gift, something like that. If, on the other hand, the county is considering a contract, and the week before, one of the applicants for that contract takes you to lunch in Paris on his private plane, a reasonable person is going to start to think that that's likely to make you depart from your faithful discharge of your duties. And so, the Ethics Commission will dig deeper into that particular issue. And then, the second one is no salary of compensation. That is our ethics definition of, don't take a bribe, right? Don't get money from a private source to vote on matters against the ethics law. I want to make sure that everyone is clear that that no specific number is not the same for the Secretary of State's financial disclosure. It's financial disclosure season. Up until recently, I'd always say, if Barbara Swigaski, you have a conversation with her, and you say, "Hey, the ethics guy said there's no gift limit. That's not true for financial disclosures." There's a $200 threshold. And so, if you get gifts from a single source of $200, you have to report on your financial disclosure for the Secretary of State's office. So shifting from gifts into some more of the substantive rules around ethics, the first one is, you can't seek an economic opportunity using your public position. So you can't use your public position to go out and seek an economic opportunity for yourself. When I'm talking to large agencies, I talk about, you can't like secure your next job using your public work now, as an example, or contracts for yourself. The second one is around unwarranted privileges. And a lot of times, we see this in complaints. Someone will think that there's unwarranted privileges. And again, we have a definition in law that unwarranted just says "without merit." And so, how does the Commission interpret that? The first step the commission will take a look at is, do you have an agency policy around the privileges and benefits certain people in your agency get? So for example, if you think about the muffin on the PTA card, the PTA might have a policy that says the president has a meal budget of $100 to meet with other officers and talk throughout the month. All of a sudden, using the PTA card for that muffin may not be an unwarranted benefit, right? You might think about a university president might have a certain number of tickets to a basketball game for the university. That may be in their employment negotiation. That may be expectation that the president come to the basketball games and bring in support for the athletic department, right? So there may be a reason for that benefit. Or a more simple one, I was in Las Vegas doing training last week, right? And the state has a reimbursement for the hotel and the travel and meals. It's a benefit, but it's not unwarranted because there's a state policy that says if you're going and doing the work of the state, then there's a certain reimbursement rate for those particular items. The third one is negotiating a contract with yourself. It's against the ethics law, because if you go into a contract negotiation, you're supposed to be, you're supposed to be 100% in for your side, right? And if you're making money on both sides of the deal, you're not going to be doing the interest of the public. And so you want to be thinking about that. So that's not only like you personally, right? But if you have a commitment in a private capacity, you can't be negotiating that contract. So be thinking about, again, that magical list of relationships. We talked about the salary retainer, don't take a bribe. That one's pretty self-explanatory. And then the next one is benefit to self or other using a subordinate. And there's kind of two prongs to that. One, you can't be using a subordinate to violate the ethics law, right? We can, we can then go up the chain. But the other one is you can't be using the folks that work for you to do your private bidding. They are there to serve the public and not you as a public officer or a public employee. I went to law school in Oregon, and I recall at the time, the local probation chief got in trouble because he was having his probation officers work with the juvenile delinquents to redo his entire house, right? In the name of vocational training. That would be an example where he was getting a private benefit using his subordinates. And then the last one is an honorarium for speaking. And I mostly put that there to just alert you that there's a rule against honorarium for speaking, but within the law, there's a lot of exceptions. So let's say that you have your, your county parks, you know, maybe your county HHS director is being recognized at some big conference, and they pay to have her go out there and speak and, and at their annual banquet. There's allowances in the law for that type of thing. It's literally just showing up and getting paid for your attendance to bolster some sort of private interest. So know that it's there, but there's also a lot of, don't be worried if you have folks on your team that are going out and speaking at engagements. It's not automatically a violation of the ethics law. So let's take a look at another one and be thinking about that formula, right? You're using a government resource. You're creating a benefit for yourself or someone who you have a commitment in a private capacity to. We'll see our buddy Tom from Parks and Rec, and we'll see if he's going off to ethics jail or if he is compliant with the law.
Dragermeister, you made it.
Yeah, I got your email. We need to talk.
First off, though, try a little snake juice.
I believe an ounce of that would literally kill me. You emailed everyone at City Hall and told them to come to a club that you own to buy alcohol that you invented. Government employees can't use their power to enhance their personal wealth.
I totally get your point, Chris. It won't happen again.
So in, in Tom's situation, right, he's using the public resource, which is the contact list of City Hall, right, and all of those employees. He is creating a benefit, which is revenue for his club. I'm going to give Tom probably more credit than he deserves and say he has like a proper club and LLC or whatever. He has a commitment in a private capacity to that club, and so he has violated, he has violated the ethics law. One of the things, at the end, we'll talk about all the different things that the commission can do in response to an ethics violation. But if the Ethics Commission determines that an individual has made money off of their ethics violation, we can then fine that individual the amount of that money and double it. And so if Tom had made $10,000 selling snake juice that night, the Ethics Commission could fine him $20,000 in response to that violation. Another one that we see a lot of complaints and concerns about, it's interesting, we get a lot of complaints and concerns about the improper benefits bucket. And then we get more advisory questions about disclosure and abstention and cooling off. So this is, this is a big one that we see a lot. And I, you know, we have a couple of different, I guess, types of folks who violate the ethics law. And there's a handful that kind of stumble into ethics violation because they didn't have awareness or training, and they just didn't know. And we have other folks who just disregard the ethics law. So this is one that I think can be easy to stumble into for folks. You cannot use government time, property, equipment, or other facility to benefit a significant personal or fiduciary or pecuniary interest. And pecuniary interest is just our fancy language to say a money interest. So the example I like to give when I, I train on this particular violation is, let's say you have an accounting tech, and she's running an Etsy shop right out of her cubicle, right? She has a glue gun plugged in. She's having the mail clerk send out her orders. She's got her spreadsheets up on her computer. She's clearly using government equipment for her own pecuniary interest. But then you get into some other questions that we might technically meet the definition of the law, but they just don't quite feel right to us in terms of being an ethics violation. So for example, let's say you have a county employee. It's like just after the first of the month, they realize they forgot to pay their rent. They hop on their county computer, they pay their rent, and then they go back to their business, right? Technically, under this part of the ethics law, that could be a violation. If you are working at your county job, you get a call and say it's your daughter's school. She broke her leg playing football at recess, and so you spend some time coordinating medical care. In both of those situations, right, you're not making money, but you have a significant personal interest in your housing and coordinating medical care for your daughter. If you're using county time, property, equipment, or facility, it could be an ethics violation for, for both of those things. In your gut, you're like, that just doesn't seem right. Like, somebody has a broken leg. How do you go about making sure that we don't, again, lose our humanity just because you've chosen public service? And so the ethics law has a limited use exception. And so what you want to be thinking about in those two subsequent examples is that are these four conditions met in a situation? The first one is that you have some sort of policy allowing the use, allowing the use of the facility or equipment, or it's a result of an emergency. So clearly, the broken leg is part of an emergency. The policy, like the, let's say the paying rent example, many government agencies have an acceptable use policy, right? It's like, don't watch porn on the county computer, don't sell drugs on the county computer, right? Don't do all of these things. But you can do tangential stuff, like you can, you know, check your personal email. Just don't download any viruses and get them on the county. So be aware of what your county policy is in terms of acceptable use of the internet. I worked, when I was in law school, I worked at the Oregon Lottery. They're like, oh, he's from Nevada. He knows all about gaming, which I didn't really, but they just thought, hey, he's from Nevada. He knows about gaming. And they had very sensitive computer things, right, like random number generators to draw the lottery numbers. And so they had set up a specific room. That was part of their acceptable use policy, right? You cannot check your personal email or do anything personal on your desk computer. But we have a specific room on your break time. You can go and do those things. It's not connected to our sensitive stuff. So understand what your county's acceptable use policy is. You can think about it, too. You have a sheriff's department. They probably have take-home cars, right? A lot of law enforcement agencies have take-home cars. And so what is the policy on? You can probably swing by 7-Eleven and get a Slurpee when you're in your patrol car, but you can't use it to take your family to Disneyland, right? And so one of the things you want to make sure is that as a county, you have these acceptable use policies at any time there may be use of county property or facility. The second example, the second requirement is that it does cannot interfere with your performance of your public duties. It's interesting, I was training a rural hospital, which was a public hospital, and so they were all covered by the ethics law. And the example of the broken leg, and someone said, well, if, if you're a ER doctor, and you get that call, and you leave a patient on the table to die because you're going to go take care of your daughter's broken leg, that's interfering with your public duties, right? Probably your medical license too, but we don't worry about that at the Ethics Commission. We're worried about the public duties. And so the other example I give is, let's say you have a firefighter, right? TikTok, maybe they do TikTok. And so you've got a rural firefighter. They have a policy that says, hey, as long as the, the truck is fueled up and the station is good, you can do personal stuff while you're waiting for a call. Say they're doing the TikTok. She's getting her audio and video all lined up. That could be allowed under their policy, and until she like lets a house burn down because she didn't go fight it, and she was focused on her TikTok, it may not be ethics violation. The third requirement is that the cost or the value is nominal. So if you think about the cost of going on and the three minutes of paying rent is going to be much, you know, less. It's not the entire cost of internet for the entire county. And then the fourth one is does not create the appearance of impropriety. And so that is the most subjective of these three tests, and you have to look to prior commission opinions. I think the one that the commission has been most clear on is like the use of your government equipment or uniform for the purposes of campaigning, right? That is, creates the appearance of impropriety. And so that's a limited use exception. Where when you're thinking about that ethics law about the use of equipment and property, you want to be thinking about what is your county's policy on acceptable use? Is there some sort of emergency that resulted, or is the use the result of an emergency? So that's, that's one to definitely be aware of. Again, all four of those need to be met. You can't just pick one and say, oh, the cost is nominal, so therefore it was allowed. It doesn't violate the ethics law. You have to check all four boxes. Another government resource, when we're thinking about that formula, that we don't necessarily always think about is information, right? The government collects and has lots of information. Some of that information is not public, and some of that information is supposed to be public. And so if in your official capacity, you either use non-public information to benefit yourself or others, or you suppress a governmental report in order to benefit yourself or others, it can be a violation of the ethics law. So as an example, right, there's a big debate right now where the members of Congress should be able to trade stocks because they're trading stocks, and they're making lots of money on trading stocks. And part of that allegation is they have access to special information in making those decisions. If you think about perhaps a more, a local level example, you might have a city councilman who finds out where a new highway is going to go, and so buys a bunch of land along that path so they can cash in later to build rest stops or whatever. That would be an example of using non-public information. I trained last week to the public employees retirement system, and like they came up with an example of, you know, we have all these, this contact information for recently retired public officials. And if your dad operates a retirement community, right? Giving all that contact information to your dad to market his retirement community would be a violation of the ethics law. In terms of suppression of a governmental report, I would just say follow Nevada's public records rules, and you should be fine. If in that process, you're withholding items that should be public to benefit yourself or others, that's when you might get in trouble with that part of the ethics law. But thinking about that, I think it's easier to think about equipment, about facilities, about public money. But information is a government resource we don't always think about in terms of a potential violation of the ethics law. We just had campaign season, and it concluded. We always get a handful of cases related to campaigns during campaign season. Again, that the benefit, you have a personal interest in your own campaign. You have a personal interest in the success of a campaign of a candidate you support. And so you cannot be using public resources to do so. We'll watch a quick clip of Leslie Knope try to make the balance of being a public employee and a office candidate at the same time.
When you're running for office, there are like a million rules of what you can and cannot do. Yes. And because I work for the government, I am not allowed to do anything campaign-related inside a government building.
Boss, I need your Herbie Hancock on this.
Outside. But it's great exercise.
So Perd Happily wants to do Thursday now.
Fine.
Did you finish the maintenance report?
I did not finish it, but I will finish it. So wait, what was your question again?
The slogan.
Okay, can I just come out there so we can talk about everything?
No, April, I need to keep my work separate, okay? Just think of it like a fun game. Parks is inside, campaign is outside. Parks is inside, campaign's outside.
Ooh, you know what'd make it more fun?
What?
This.
Okay, so in that example, April has the better strategy, right? Just shut the door and keep your two things completely separate. For those of you that may remember the Kathy Augustine case, Kathy Augustine was a state comptroller. And she was basically using her office as her campaign headquarters and her staff as her campaign, her public staff as her campaign staff. That case started as an ethics case. And one of the things that the Ethics Commission can do is that if they find a certain number of willful violations of the ethics law, we are required, in the case of a constitutional officer like Kathy Augustine was, to refer the matter to the legislature for potential impeachment. And so it started as an ethics case, referred to the legislature. She was impeached. She was not removed from office. She did lose her next election. When I lived in Perump at the start of my public service career, there was an assessor, and there was a big group of folks who wanted the assessor recalled. And so they started a recall campaign. They were having a recall campaign in front of the county commission headquarters. She found out about it, this, this campaign to get all the signatures signed. And so, you know, she, she became enraged, and she had all of her staff like raid the supply closet and make a bunch of, we love our assessor signs and, you know, say, her name was Shirley, save Shirley signs. And they took their county cars and screamed across the streets of Perump to do a counter protest. And so she survived the recall, but she got into ethics trouble for using public resources in that way. And so that's something to think about. There's a very specific provision of the ethics law that says you cannot spend public money on a campaign. And so that's one we'll look at. But also, if you think about the use of facilities, unwarranted benefits, those can all also be wrapped up in, in supporting campaigns. And again, it can cover not only a campaign for yourself, because you have a pecuniary interest and a personal interest in a campaign for yourself, but in the support of another campaign as well can trigger an ethics violation. So that is the improper benefits bucket. Government resource creating a benefit for you or somebody of a commitment in private capacity for. Any questions about the improper benefits bucket? Okay. The next bucket is disclosure and abstention, so please read this quote from President Wilson. "When we think about a public office as a public trust and shall be held for the sole benefit of the people, that improper benefit bucket is the nuts and bolts of that, right? The disclosure and abstention requirement is about the transparency to ensure that our public officers and employees are doing the work of the people and not benefiting themselves." So although they're in the same bucket, they're a little bit different analysis. And so we'll start with disclosure. And again, when you come into public office, your public employees, they have their entire lives with them, right? They don't have to cut off their entire lives just because they're, they've chosen public service. And so there are going to be times when your private interests, your private relationships intersect with your public duties. And so the ethics law requires that a public officer or employee disclose a conflict of interest when they've received a gift or a loan, if it's going to impact their significant pecuniary interest, when they might be reasonably affected by a commitment in private capacity. And then there's one where like, if you used to be a lobbyist within the last year, and now you're a public officer, there's some special rules. We don't see that a whole lot, but that's something to keep in mind. And so folks will say, okay, well, what, what do I need you to do? I know I need to disclose. How do I make a disclosure? The ethics law says a proper disclosure has to be sufficient to inform the public of the potential effect of the action or abstention on your interest, and it has to be made at the matter, at the time the matter is considered. Let's take an example of a county employee. Let's say you have a health inspector, and the health inspector gets their list of restaurants to go inspect for the week, and their son's restaurant is on the list, right? They have a, they're within the third degree of consanguinity, so they have a commitment in a private capacity. And you would expect that a father's judgment in, in inspecting his own son's restaurant might be reasonably affected by that relationship. And so at that point, that health inspector needs to put in an email to the agency head, right? The head of the health department, or whatever agency is doing the health inspections, that, hey, this, I got my list of inspections. My, my son's restaurant is on that list, and so please tell me what to do at this point, right? So you're shining a light on the potential conflict of interest. And again, it has to be made at the matter, the time is considered. So you can't like go out and do the inspection and then come back and tell your boss, like, oh, I had a conflict of interest on that, that I did this week. You know, that, that is not going to work for a disclosure. And so disclosures, in, in the position of county commissioners, it's great to work with your legal counsel on what exactly needs to be in the disclosure, but it has to be in sufficient detail to inform the public of what that potential conflict of interest is. So again, the first step is figuring out if you have to disclose. The second is abstention. And abstention is sitting out the entire process. You cannot advocate for the passage or failure of a matter, and you cannot vote on a matter. So you're basically taking yourself out of the ballgame. And you're required to do that if the judgment of a reasonable person would be affected by a gift or a loan, the list of relationships that we talked about, or your own private pecuniary interest. That being said, the ethics law understands we can't have an abstention requirement that is so strict that people are just left and right, sitting out of the positions they were elected by their people to do, right? We can't make the ethics law a situation where folks are missing out on their representation in government because it is, is so strict. And so the ethics law has a presumption in favor of participation. In order to be, have this presumption, you have to make that disclosure. So if you fail to disclose a conflict of interest, the presumption is not going to be there to protect you in terms of your ability to participate in the matter. If you've made an appropriate disclosure, then abstention is only required in clear cases where your situation is materially affected, right? cases where your situation is materially affected, right? In we have some case law in commission opinions in disclosure that even a remote conflict you should disclose, right, err on the side of disclosure, but it has to be a clear case in order to trigger the abstention requirement. It's also presumed that your participation is permissible if even if you are impacted, if you're not impacted more or less than anybody else. And so, you know, as an example, well, I tell people like, let's say you have a city council and they are deciding that they want to celebrate ice cream. And so they're going to say, in the month of July, anybody who sells, you know, all ice cream shops don't have to pay their business fees. And let's say you have a city council member who owns an ice cream shop, right? And so the city council member needs to disclose, I own an ice cream shop, I'll pay this much less in fees. And so I'm disclosing this potential conflict of interest. But because that applies to all the ice cream shops in town, they're no, they're not like greater or less effective than the other ice cream shops, they can still participate in the matter. That example worked well, except for when I was training in Ely and they were like, we only have one ice cream shop, so what do I do now? I said, no, like there you're specifically being impacted. We see this a lot in planning commissions and rezoning, like I happen to live, thank you, I happen to live in this neighborhood that is being rezoned. That's fine, we're not rezoning your one particular house, right? It's this entire neighborhood that might be rezoned. And so you need to disclose, but you can still participate, the presumption allows that. Questions about disclosure and abstention? One of the questions that sometimes comes up, especially right after a campaign season is, do I need to disclose campaign donate? Like if I have a campaign donor, do I have to disclose that on the record? And the ethics law says no. As long as you have properly reported that campaign donation on your campaign filings, then you don't need to disclose that particular campaign donation because the disclosure is all about transparency and the transparency is there from the forms you fill out with the Secretary of State. If you haven't properly reported it, then there's going to be some issues, right? All right. So that's disclosure and abstention. We'll talk about cooling off next.
Boys, I'm retiring.
From what?
From the grind. I mean, who needs it? You know, I've accomplished everything I've set out to do.
What's that?
Oh, bought myself a little retirement gift, gold watch.
Ooh.
It's not really gold.
The final bucket is cooling off. And this is when we talk about people departing public service, right? Both employees and officers. And in the state of Nevada, we have a one-year cooling off period. And there's really two prongs to the cooling off requirement. One is about who you can go work for and the other is about what you can actually do, no matter who you work for. So the first requirement is you cannot go work for a vendor of the agency, right? There's some specific stuff related to state agencies, like the Public Utilities Commission, the Nevada Gaming Control Board, they have some special rules. But for all agencies, it's a vendor of the agency. So if you have somebody who works for Douglas County, they cannot go work for a contractor, a vendor of the county within that year. There's some extra requirements, it has to be above a certain monetary value, it has to be, you know, made within a certain amount of time. But essentially, for a year after you leave public service, you can't go work for a vendor. Why do we have the cooling off requirements? Because what we don't want is for folks to, while they still have government power, make decisions based on their future employer, right? Or be promised that future employment based on decisions they'll make while they still have government power. The second prong is that no matter who you work for, after you leave public office, you can't go back and counsel for compensation. So you can't be paid to either lobby the group you came from or counsel that group on an item that you worked on while you were there. So let's say you're at a public agency, you help develop a RFP for a contract, you can't then go work for one of the applicants while that RFP is still pending and help them win that contract, right? Violation of the cooling off provisions of the law. The first prohibition on vendors of the agency, relief can actually be granted if you ask for an advisory opinion and the commission is like a four factor test to determine if you should be able to go work for this particular company. The second one, relief cannot be granted. So we saw that, we saw so it's rare that relief is granted. We saw some of that during the pandemic when we had county governments like bring people on as county staff to do testing or vaccinations and then later take that to a private entity. And there was some continuity there. We said, this is in the public interest to allow this to happen. But for the most part, relief is not often granted. So that's the cooling off section. Any questions on cooling off? Told you the second buckets were a little bit smaller than the first. Okay, so, and let me just, before I move on to what can happen if you violate the ethics law, in talking about that advisory opinion process, in order to ask for advisory opinion, we have a form online, you just complete it. That advisory opinion goes to our commission counsel and the commission has 45 days to issue a determination. And so the advisory opinion process, like I said, we see a lot when we we get lots of cooling off as people are preparing to depart public office, we get a lot of disclosure and abstention. Perhaps you have some new relationship or you're new to the new to the commission, new to the board, you have some sort of relationship you think might come into contact with your public agency a lot. You can ask for specific instructions on what you need to do in terms of disclosure and abstention, but it is 45 days. So an advisory opinion, like if you got a vote next week and you need to know what to do, the advisory opinion is not particularly helpful, right? Because it's going to be like a month after the the vote actually happens that we can provide it. But it is a tool and a resource. It's confidential. What happens is the entire process from the point you request an advisory opinion until we issue it to you is confidential. If somebody asks if you filed one, we will say we don't confirm or deny. There are some instances where folks will waive confidentiality once that that opinion is issued. If they don't, we'll rewrite the opinion to mask the individual's name and agency so it's a it's an abstract opinion. But in some cases, folks want their name on one, like they might be being regularly accused of being unethical and they want something from the Ethics Commission with their name on it that says, no, I'm following the ethics law. In terms of the penalties of the ethics law, as we kind of talked about in Tom's case and the snake juice, we have the ability in some cases to issue monetary penalties. A lot of times we'll do stipulated agreements to require education or policy practice. We can do letters of instruction or caution. I talked about our first goal is always education and outreach. So sometimes, so this doesn't need to be an entire full case, like what this public official needs is just some really clear instruction from the commission on what their duties are. We can do admonishments and reprimands, which is like, you know, formal finger wagging from the commission. We do censures, embarrassing, right? But but not necessarily a real impact on an individual. If there's criminal activity at the end of the case, we can refer it to the appropriate authorities for their consideration under the ethics law. One of the things the Ethics Commission will do is if there's a violation, will determine if it was willful or non-willful. There's a seven factor test to determine like, you know, did they make a bunch of money? Did they get advice before and ignore the advice? One of the things related to disclosure and abstention is if you go ask for advice from your legal counsel and your legal counsel gives you advice and you follow that advice and let's say your legal counsel was wrong, not that that ever happens with legal counsel, but let's say your legal counsel was not quite right, then we cannot find it to be a willful violation, right? There's a safe harbor provision in the law that says you did the right thing. You're trying to get legal advice, you follow legal advice. And so it's not going to be a willful violation. We can, I talked a little bit about the petition for removal of a public officer. If it's an impeachable officer, like governor, lieutenant governor, treasurer, then we refer to the legislature. If it's a legislator who we've determined has a willful violation, it goes to their house, like if their senator goes to the senate. If it's not, let's say it's a city manager who's a public officer, right? But they don't go before the legislature for impeachment, we can file a lawsuit in the local county to have them removed from office. And so those, that's kind of the most severe thing that can happen with the Ethics Commission. I will say, you know, a consequence for having ethics issues as an agency is it starts to deteriorate that public trust in your agency. And so certainly if you're in elected office, your political camp, your political campaign opponent next time could take like one of those black and white grainy photos of you and call you unethical. And so there are some consequences beyond just what the Ethics Commission can do, right? A lot of times we hear the Ethics Commission isn't doing enough to stop this person from, you know, violating the ethics law or isn't doing enough. But we are somewhat restricted in what we can do as a commission. Some specific things we can't do, I talked about sending someone to ethics jail. We don't have ethics jail, that'd be the most boring jail in the history of jails. And so we don't have an ethics jail, there's no criminal sanctions. Although if you violate a criminal law, right, a law enforcement agency, a district attorney can prosecute you for that. And then we also can't file an injunction. Sometimes we get folks who reach out to our office and say, hey, this city council is about to make this decision next week and they're going to totally like give all their parents a bunch of money and it's unethical and terrible. We can't file an injunction and stop that public agency from acting, right? In the post pandemic world, we can like log in on Zoom and watch the ethics violation happen and then file a complaint the next week, but we can't stop them from actually, you know, exercising their power as a public officer or official. So I have four tips for compliance for public officers and employees. The first one is maintain a list of individuals or entities that you have a commitment in a private capacity to. I can't tell you how many times we see complaints or issues where people just weren't paying attention to an agenda item and they didn't realize they had somebody that they were in business with on an agenda item and they start and they find out halfway. But if you maintain a list of folks that are on that magical list of relationships, you're going to be able to see ethics issue a mile away and then work with your legal counsel and figuring out what your ethical obligations are. The second one is to review any agendas beforehand, not only to review the agendas and determine what you want to do on particular matters, but also with an eye towards, do I have any conflicts of interest on this matter that I need to disclose and potentially abstain? The third is to consult with your legal counsel. All of our opinions are online. We have an opinions page of our website. And so your legal counsel can search those opinions and try to find a fact pattern that matches the most with you. We as a staff can't provide legal advice to individuals, but if we get a call from a DA's office or a city attorney's office and they're trying to help a public officer or employee, we can point them to a couple of opinions that they might be able to to understand what your obligations are. So always consult with legal counsel. And then, as I've said, there's the ability to have an advisory opinion. And so that is always out there for public officers or employees to to figure it out. So maybe you might have someone who's a department head and they're trying to figure something out and you can't really figure out from the Ethics Commission's prior opinions what they should do, have them file an advisory opinion and we can help them out through that process. So that concludes my presentation. And so just so the year where we we regularly post updates and educational material on our social media, we have a Twitter and a LinkedIn where we post information that can help you kind of just inject little ethics reminders into your feed as you're scrolling through. It can be helpful to just keep the ethics requirements in front of mind. And then, of course, our ethics website has a bunch of resources as well. We are, most folks are, you know, they they don't like to get a call from the Ethics Commission. I found that out when I was in a position where we're giving out a bunch of grant money. People liked taking my call. Now they're not so sure they want to hear from me. But we are here for you, right? We're here to serve the the counties and the cities and the state agencies and the public officers and employees to help you conform with the ethics law and keep you out of trouble. And so I appreciate you inviting me to to come share this presentation with you. And if there's anything else, any other ways that the Ethics Commission can be of service to Douglas County and the folks of Douglas County, don't hesitate to reach out because we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Questions by the commissioners? Commissioner Hales? Commissioner Nosedad? Commissioner Rice? Any questions?
No, dear.
Commissioner Turkianian? Okay, I don't have any questions either. Yes, absolutely. Deputy DA Doug Ritchie.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I can vouch for the professionalism of the Commission on Ethics. It goes without saying that sometimes public officers in the county are accused of unethical conduct and we have worked closely to work through issues. You know, our offices defended some public officials, but the Ethics Commission are a great resource. And again, I'll I'll echo what Director Armstrong said. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask me, contact them directly, they can get, we have gotten opinions before, advisory opinions, it's very helpful. I did have one question, just to follow up. Campaigns. If someone, if a commissioner, because we're about to, the board is about to make appointments later today and tomorrow, and they're going to be making appointments. If someone's made a campaign contribution, commissioner is not required to disclose that someone made a campaign contribution because that's another section of our NRS. Is that correct?
As long as that campaign contribution has been properly reported on the campaign finance documents and that, then a campaign contribution is not not triggered that disclosure requirement.
Now, to the extent that someone, say was a, worked on their campaign, my, I'll tell you what I would advise. My advice would be always disclose. If you had somebody working on your campaign, the election's over, obviously, so it's not a current pecuniary interest, but you know, your friends, the the best advice is to disclose, yes, this person who's seeking an appointment worked on my campaign, however, I feel I can be impartial, but it doesn't require under the NRS abstention unless there's a clear case. But that, I want to clarify that because we're about to go in that process.
Yeah, the, one of the challenging parts is that each case is so fact dependent and I can never say exactly what the commissioners are going to decide. But in general, always err on the side of disclosure. I would think someone that worked on your campaign, it would be, it's interesting because the nature of campaigns, right, that they don't last forever. And so it might not necessarily meet that definition of substantial and continuing business relationship, but I think the commission could see it as a substantially similar one because during that time period where you would have a campaign, there was this continuing business relationship between them and your campaign. And so like I would say, when in doubt, disclose, make sure that disclosure is clear. And then, you know, unless there's a clear case, if there's additional facts, you know, like they worked on their campaign and they're your brother, right? Then you want to think about the abstention analysis. So, yeah, when in doubt, disclose, but just because somebody worked on a campaign, it doesn't necessarily automatically mean you have to abstain from from any of that.
I think there's a Sparks case where it was like his campaign manager was like his brother, wasn't his brother, was like his brother.
Yeah, there, there, there's an advisory opinion that talks about that, where you had some folks working on the campaign and and I think the quote was, they're like a brother to me, right? And it's like, well, then that's substantially similar and and you should disclose and abstain from this one particular matter that was clearly going to benefit that person who was like a brother, right? There were some other items in that advisory opinion that said, on these ones, it's not close enough, you can, you should disclose, but you don't have to abstain.
And just one follow up, people come and say, well, do I have to, do I have to disclose? Do I have to abstain? Only you know those facts. You, only you, the public official, know the the extent of that relationship. So trying to come to either to the DA's office or to you and say, should I abstain? Well, you you have to explain the facts, why, why you should abstain or even disclose. But I agree with you, always disclose, never hurts to disclose.
Yeah, I think one of the things too is that that answer can change depending on the nature of what you're voting on.
Right.
Right? And 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 that's why one of the compliance tips is understand who's on your list so that you can go, oh, I need to work this this analysis out on disclosure and abstention before we get to the meeting. I think that's the, that's the key there.
Again, thank you for doing this training today. And I can't speak highly enough for the professionalism of the Ethics Commission office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. I, it's certainly important for us as a board going into tomorrow when we're going to make our advisory board appointments, very, very difficult for us in that by and large, we personally know a majority of the people that are applying for these boards. And that makes our our position even more difficult. But it also, if we, if we were to recuse ourselves on any particular board because of the individuals that are that are applying, then then we might not even be able to get three votes to to do that. So we have to weigh those things as as commissioners when we go through that process. So I think that was an important thing to bring up, Mr. Ritchie. So, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Hales, you have your light on?
Oh, I was just going to note that if there is an abstention, then the number for quorum can go down. So, you know, if two people abstained, you'd only need a vote of two.
Yeah, okay.
I did, I did notice in the, in the policies and procedures for making appointments, there is a framework. And using that framework can help people not be driven by who they know, but by what the criteria are.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Armstrong. I appreciate it. So we're at at 12:15. We have some decisions to make here regarding our timing because we have a another presentation in regards to open meeting law. I'm not exactly sure how long that's going to take. Then we have our Community Development Department coming forward to talk about planning. And then we have the discussions on the individual commissioners voting or the committee assignments, appointments. So anyways, what, I, I think we do need to take a break here, okay? The question is, do we need to take a lunch break? Or I know the weather, is there a feeling that we need to take a lunch break or just a, a break to, to?
I think we have a bunch of people here who want to hear the open meeting law training and I would hate to have them wait for an hour to be able to get that done. I just need 10 minutes, five, five, 10 minutes.
Commissioners? 15? Okay. Why don't we return at, my, my, my computer is showing 12:17. Why don't we reconvene at 12:30? Okay? Very good. We'll reconvene at 12:30.
12:30, so if the commissioners would return to their seats, we could proceed with item number four on the agenda.
Walt, Charlotte.
Where did Doug go? I guess we can't go anywhere without him now. There he is. Okay. Okay, we're back in session, 12:33. All five commissioners are present with Commissioner Rice participating on Zoom. Before we get started, Doug, Mr. Ritchie, Commissioner Noah said, "I failed to ask you to indulge us with operating the timing machine as we go forward with the meeting," but I didn't want to make that assumption, so I appreciate your taking on that responsibility again. So at this time, item number four, for presentation only, training on Nevada's open meeting law by Deputy District Attorney Doug Ritchie. And once again, I'd mentioned that this is for presentation only, so there will be no public comment on that. It'll just be questions and answers after your presentation, or perhaps during, if there's a question by the commissioners. I hope you don't mind the interruption. I hope you can stay on track. You've been known to be able to do that, so anyways, so commissioners, as we go through this, if there's any questions that you have, please, please, you know, rather than wait and forget what those questions were, go ahead and ask the question. Don't wait for acknowledgement from me or from Mr. Ritchie, okay? Very good. So, Mr. Ritchie, cheers.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I do have a PowerPoint, but to spare your necks, I'm just going to talk to you, because that's the only screen that's working. I enjoy this area of law. It's Nevada's open meeting law. I didn't know about Woodrow Wilson and his quote on transparency, but I wholly support it. Patrick Henry said, "The liberties of a people never were nor ever will be secure when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them." And that's embodied in NRS. The legislative intent for NRS Chapter 241, which is Nevada's open meeting law, is that all public bodies exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that deliberations be conducted openly. I'm going to skip to the heart of it. The open meeting law has some very simple elements. Do not come together as a quorum of members of this body or any public body to discuss business unless at a public meeting that has been properly noticed and agendized, to deliberate towards a decision or to take action on a matter that the board has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power over. So that's pretty much it. It's pretty self-explanatory. We can end right now. It's if there's a majority of you and you're talking about something over which you have power to make decisions, you need to stop, because that deliberation needs to be taken in a public forum with an agenda that has been published to the people, so they know that you're going to meet and what you're going to talk about. I do have a PowerPoint.
Can I add a question?
Of course.
I'm a little confused from our first time we went through this to what, if this would count as an open meeting violation. Two county commissioners get together, they talk about something, then the one county commissioner who was in that meeting goes and talks to another one separately. Is that now open meeting law because three of them spoke at it at different times, or do they have to be at the same time?
That is a great question. The short answer is, on a five-member board, like a Board of County Commissioners, two of you cannot violate the open meeting law. You just can't, because you don't have a quorum. But your fact pattern is that, well, two of you talk, but then one of you goes and talks to a third member. Well, now you have a potential violation. And there's a case, this is much farther down in my presentation, but there's a specific case that deals with that. And the Nevada Supreme Court has said that as long as the, those two just talk amongst themselves, there is no violation, but as soon as one of them says, "Hey, I talked to Commissioner Hales, for instance, and she and I are on the same page on this, how about you?" Now you've got three, because you've told what the third person, you've gathered the three together now. But for instance, if it was, you know, Commissioner Noah Sat talked to Chairman Gardner and said, "You know, this agenda item I have some problems with," and he says, "You know what? I agree. I think some problems with it." And then Commissioner Noah Sat went to talk to Commissioner Tarkanian and said, "I have some problems with this. How do you feel about it?" And just that was the extent of your discussion. Under the Nevada Supreme Court case, I can't remember what it is, I normally have it off the top of my head, but there wouldn't be a violation. But here's the thing is that I would advise, and I think anybody that advises in this area, just don't do it, because it's too easy, too easy to let it slip that you've talked to somebody else and they have an opinion on the matter. And besides that, more fundamentally, the idea, and I know, Commissioner Tarkanian, you support this, if you're having a discussion of substance regarding something that's going to impact the county, have that discussion in a public forum so that everybody can hear you talk about it, because sometimes there's this impression that by the time it comes to the public, all of the juicy stuff, all the details that kind of led to that process, to the conclusion, the public misses out on. And if you're having these private discussions, you're having, I assume, very informative discussions about your thoughts, the facts that you're considering, and if, when you come to the meeting, all you do is get to the conclusion, the people miss out on all of the, I guess, the sausage, you know, the sausage making, how you came to that conclusion.
I'm going to sidetrack your presentation. I apologize, because this, this, most of this stuff is pretty easy to understand, but and this has always bothered me, and we discussed this before, and you've given your reasons why, but maybe you can tell the public the reasons why. So we have two-on-ones where we meet with the county manager and legal counsel. As the chairman has said, he discusses issues with you guys before he makes decisions of what's going to be on the agenda. We know in those meetings that you guys give different opinions. How is that open and transparent? I understand technically it might not be a violation of open meeting law, because you guys aren't elected, but certainly when you have one or two commissioners together and you're going through items and the other commissioners don't know about it until we get to the meeting, and there's been a chance to get your guys' opinion to those commissioners separately, isn't there an issue with at least the intent of what the open meeting law is about?
As you pointed out, the law is very clear that those kind of staff briefings among less than a majority are not subject to open meeting law. To address the concern you've brought up, which is a valid concern, I think the issue is, we're talking especially for agenda setting, and I sit in those meetings generally with the chair and vice chair, whoever that may be, and it's changed over the years. But the idea is so the chair and vice chair can kind of know, these are the things that are coming up on the agenda, and the chair can kind of give staff some feedback, like, "Well, why is this happening? What kind of information?" The problem with, to your point, for agenda setting, including more than two commissioners, and well, now you've had a discussion on the agenda with a quorum, and the public definitely needs to be involved in that. So as far as agenda setting, that is more procedural. It's like, okay, this is what's coming up. Do we think any of these consent items should be on administrative? How much time is it going to take? It's process. It's not substantive.
That's not my question. My question was, you guys give your opinions on certain items. This is an agenda setting. I just said, Mr., the chairman has acknowledged that he goes to you guys for that at least, and I know that there's opinions that are being provided on different items. I mean, that's really my, my issue. As a board, we're going to discuss and debate items, but the county staff has already gotten to each of the commissioners separately and outside the public's purview and given their opinions.
Got it. So what happens there is, not so much two-on-ones, but we could do this, and some, some public agencies do this, rather than have two-on-ones, they have one-on-one. But for efficiency, just transparency to the public, the minimum, the maximum we can have is two people, and so for efficiency, there'll be a meeting with two, two, and one. And the reason they do that is for staff to go, "Here is the, this is the upcoming agenda. Here's the supporting material that's going to come there. Do you have any questions?" And it's for the benefit of the commissioners. It's, the staff really don't have a dog in the fight. It's, they're, there's maybe an application from, say, a developer, there may be questions, "Well, what about the zoning?" I mean, there's so many different questions that can come up, but they're technical questions for staff. Now, a commissioner may say, you know, "I don't have any interest in that," and some, so the meeting's very short. Others, as you know, they have a lot of questions. And part of it, too, to be honest, is to allow the commissioner to let staff know, "This is deficient. You know, I have questions about this." And so from the staff's perspective, they can determine, well, if Commissioner Tarkanian has questions about this, the other commissioners may, and the public may want to know. You know, that's a good, that's a good point, Commissioner. And so it gives staff an opportunity to either supplement the supporting material, or at the meeting, clarify or expand upon the information that's presented, not only to that commissioner, but to, to the public, to everyone. That's the purpose behind these meetings. Staff, as you know, they don't have a vote. What they do is they present this information and they get feedback from each individual commissioner.
I think the meetings are very helpful, and I'm not saying that we, we should ban them, but you say that there's no dog in the fight, but there are opinions and suggestions of what items and how to go and process those items, and that's the problem I have, is when this is being done outside the purview of the other commissioners, we don't have a chance to respond until we get to a meeting and we don't know what was said and what influence was bestowed upon them. We can disagree if you want, that the, the, the staff doesn't have a dog in the fight. I, I think on some issues, they certainly do.
You know, to the-
May I make, make an observation, Mr. Ritchie? And I, and I, I've had this concern for, for quite some time, before becoming a commissioner, the validity of the two-on-ones, because the, the two-on-ones give two commissioners, and it, prior to about four years ago, the commissioners rotated on that process, so you never, you were never having the same two commissioners in a two-on-one. It would rotate. Obviously, because of the nature of the two-on-ones, one commissioner will always be by themselves. Now, since becoming a commissioner, as you know, and Mr. Cates knows, I've taken the opportunity to isolate myself to a, to basically a one-on-one. If you want to call it a two-on-one, it's me and yourself and, and Mr. Cates, okay? So basically, the two-on-ones are basically two-on-twos, right? I mean, with legal counsel and, but that's, I see that as a concern, and I, and I probably, I, you, I probably share it with my commissioners, maybe not, is that by being in a two-on-one situation, the questions I particularly ask to staff for clarification on some things, or after I've looked at the packet, I have some, some, I'm not sure that the packet is complete, or I don't have enough information. And that's the purpose of the two-on-ones, is to give us the opportunity to tell staff, "Hey, we need some more information on this particular item, and we need some clarification on this item. It's not real clear to, to us." But I, I don't know that, you know, when you leave a two-on-one, Commissioner Tarkanian with, I guess you were with Commissioner Rice and, and Commissioner Noah Sat was with Commissioner Ingalls on a, on a routine basis, it kind of gives your, by, just by the questions you ask, it, it lets the other commissioner know kind of what your position is on those issues as well. I'm not sure that's a good idea. I don't know that that's a good idea. See, when I come before the board, even though, and, and the, the agenda process for the Board of Commissioners is a work in progress all the time. I mean, our, our administrative aide to the board has probably 20, 30, 40 items that are, that are percolating and not ready to come before the board until all the information is there. So it's not like we will end today and, and start over with a whole new set of ideas coming forward tomorrow. So, and if things aren't ready for the board, then they get pulled back, as, as Mr. Ritchie has indicated. There have been times where Commissioner Rice, we're not setting the agenda. I mean, the, the staff is bringing to us what's been percolating, what's been percolating, and saying, "These things are ready now." And, and then the actions that Commissioner Rice and I have taken is, gee, is that really ready for prime time, or is it not? And if it is, then fine. Commissioner Noah Sat has been involved in that process previously, same, same, same basic thing. So it's not the commissioners bringing items to staff to put on the board agenda, it's, it's staff saying, "These are the things that are ready to go before the board, and, and we have the substantial, we have the information ready for you now." Or other people have asked for presentation time or community development has timelines. So I would encourage you, actually, I would encourage you to perhaps, I wish to continue my one-on-one process after the board, after the agenda is published to the public, and certainly you as commissioners could ask staff to do the same thing. You could meet on a one-on-one basis. We could accommodate that. I believe we should be able to accommodate that. So, any questions about that?
I just have one thought, and that is, as I understand it, it's perfectly acceptable for me, if I want to lobby one commissioner, to call him and say, "Have you spoken with any other commissioners about this?" And if they say no, then I can say, "Well, I'd like to talk to you about it. Are you okay talking to me about it?" Because then we can't talk to anyone else. So if, I, I think that's perfectly acceptable, and I plan to do it. But if I end up being in a two-on-one with someone who is not that commissioner, then we can't talk about that item.
If I may, that-
Just an observation.
Commissioner Hales, you're, that's spot on. That, that's the difficulty with a two-on-one, because if you have a discussion and you wanted to talk to somebody else, well, now you've got the two, plus the one is the three. And to Commissioner Tarkanian's point about, you know, what I understand you're saying is that staff is presenting information during the two-on-ones, and you would like a chance to know that and do a rebuttal, basically, or say, "Yeah, but," or, but that's the thing, Commissioner Tarkanian, the "yeah, but," the rebuttals, the arguments with staff, and you can do that all day. That should occur in a public forum, right? It's like, staff, you said X, you're wrong. You know, you said Y, that's incorrect, or whatever that may be, because what you're really, I shouldn't say you, a commissioner, a commissioner with a concern about what's being presented during these staff briefings, what you're really saying is, "Well, I want to present, I want to have a rebuttal, or I want to supplement what staff's presenting, or I want to clarify what staff is presenting." But that's not the purpose of those meetings. That, it's a, the purpose is for a commissioner, or in this case, two commissioners, to receive information, ask questions, ask for clarification, that those two commissioners may have. Now, it's true that you may have thought, and I've, to be honest, in these meetings, I've thought, "That's a, that's some great information. I wish I could share that with the other commissioners," but that's not my role, and it would be inappropriate for me to say, "You know, Commissioner Tarkanian brought up this point in our two-on-one. You should probably think about that, too, because that's, that would be inappropriate." Hopefully, that great point that you brought out in the two-on-one, the question, is brought out during the meeting, when not only the other commissioners hear it, but the public also hears the great point or clarification you want to make. We, the, to answer your question, the open meeting law allows it. As a commissioner, you could say, "I don't want that. I don't feel comfortable with it," or "I think staff doesn't work well." I can tell you, in the 12 years I've been here, there's been a commissioner that asked me not to attend for a period of time the two-on-ones. I don't know why. They never told me why, but that's fine. I'm, I'm a resource for them, and if they don't want that resource, that's fine. And that's, I think it is with the rest of the staff. I think it's beneficial for the staff, not only for the board, but also for the staff, because a commissioner may bring up a point that staff didn't think about, and to be honest, they would like some time to prepare to answer the question, rather than be caught flat-footed in a public meeting and look like idiots. I mean, I, a lot of times, people ask me legal questions on the fly, and I'll be honest, I don't have all 300 and something chapters at NRS memorized, but if there's certain areas that I know is coming up on the agenda, I try to prep on that. But those two-on-ones, at least for me, are very valuable, because I can get a sense of what all the commissioners have an interest in. I hope that answered your question. Well, this, I think this is, these, this is very helpful. I'm sure the public is very fascinated by what goes on behind the scenes for the county commissioner meetings. All of you-
I agree. I think it's very important discussion and clarification and understanding, and that's something I think we need to have. So I, I don't have any problem with the discussion, and as long as, however long it takes, you know, have it, please. Okay?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rice, yes, you've been silent, so go, please.
Thank you. I found this engrossing and fascinating. I, for one, really enjoyed the two-on-one. Being, being able to get another person's view, excuse me, on a particular issue, I find very helpful. I like to, I, I like to look at an issue and look at the other, both sides of the issue, and try to come up with what, what, in my mind, is the best resolution. And by getting input from another commissioner and discussing it with the, with the county manager and with our district attorney, it, it helps me clarify in my mind what the issues are and what direction, what more information I might be seeking. So I, for one, find the two-for-ones quite valuable. Thank, thank you for your time.
Commissioner Hales, you had your light on.
I, I just was going to make an observation, that of course, county staff doing the briefing could, via assist a violation, if they said, "Well, the other two, or the other one, blah, blah." So we would never want that to happen, but I think it might be helpful for the manager or whoever's in the two-on-one to get some feedback, because there might be some consistent opinions across the five that might help efficiencies and not entering an area where they're not going to get any kind of support. And I, to me, I think that is a, a good, good use of the two-on-ones, it would seem.
So I tried not to prolong something that's, we're really not getting to the point I was bringing up. I, I said from the beginning, I thought the two-on-ones are very valuable, and everything that Wes and Commissioner Hale says is, is accurate, but it's my concern, and, and we can debate whether this happened or not, is you're not getting information from the commissioners. The county manager or his staff is giving information- The county manager, or his staff, is giving information to persuade the commissioners. That's my problem.
To, to the extent that you believe staff is trying to persuade you, um, I would, I would say that's inappropriate. I mean, there's, clearly, when you talk to me for legal advice, I give you my legal advice. As far as staff, when they have their staff report, they may, I mean, to the extent they say, does this, do these, for instance, a variance? Do these meet, does this application meet the requirements for a variance? Staff will say yes or no. To that extent, yeah, they are advocating, but not really. They don't care if this applicant gets a permit or not. I mean, otherwise, there's an ethics violation, right? They, they don't care. But they do care in providing information to you to say, as, as technical experts, this is what the code requires to get, say, a variance, or to, for a zoning change. And they provide that to you. Typically, it's in the form of a staff report, and that ultimately ends up in the agenda, which is provided to the public. The only benefit that I see from these two-on-ones is that the commissioners individually get kind of a sneak peek to ask staff questions about this stuff. That's, that's the only benefit. And I will also point out, this complies with OML, because the agenda is published before we have our two-on-ones. So the supporting material upon which the board is relying is also provided and available to the public, either at or before the time that you, as commissioner, see it and discuss it with staff. That's another area of OML, but I, I do want to make that point, that the agenda materials are provided to the public at or before the time that these staff meetings occur, or when the commissioners receive it. And since we're talking about it, the OML does require, the open meeting law, requires that the materials upon which this board makes, deliberates, and takes action must be available to the public at the same time you receive it. So, a lot of times, uh, people will come up, and they'll ask the clerk, they'll give stuff to the clerk. It becomes a part of their record, um, but the, the board doesn't see it before the public does. And usually, the, the, the member of the public will summarize whatever it is they're presenting to the board, which is the purpose of public comment.
If I may. When you said, uh, staff briefing, is that, is that equivalent to, uh, the two-step process in presenting a case? In other words, I want to build X, Y, Z, and here's how we're gonna do it, da-da-da. But that's at the, that's at the meeting.
Right.
Is there anything, prior to that, you said staff briefing, and I'd like to understand that a little more.
Sure. You've, you, as a commissioner, and as a former vice chair, know what the information is. It may be, here's the contract for, um, our food with Cisco Systems. This is the contract for food for the jail, for the inmates in the jail. That, that is provided to you. That is the, that's the extent of the briefing. Do you have questions about it? Why are we changing from some, from U.S. Foods to Cisco Systems? It's that fairly mundane stuff, but it may be of interest to you, and it may be of interest to the public. Why did the county switch from this food provider to another food provider?
That's at, that's at the apex. In other words, it's on, it's people sitting there, we've got the information based on our two-on-one, one-on-one.
Right.
Uh, I guess what I'm looking for, more than that, is what's going on behind the scenes in active projects? What are we gonna be anticipating in the next quarter, say?
That, that is why you have a county manager. He does a great job of kind of keeping you apprised of the status of these big projects that the county commissioners ha- care about. For instance, the new law enforcement center. Where are we at? Are we at design? Do we have funding for design? Has it been funded? Uh, the construction of Mueller, is there funding available for that? Those are the more big-ticket items that I think the public have an interest in. Most people don't care whether we're buying our bread from Cisco Systems or U.S. Foods, but I know, based on public comment, people do have an interest on Mueller Lane, um, some developments that are occurring.
That's my point exactly.
Yeah.
However, however, there's nothing to prevent us, and, and, and the, actually, the norms and procedures encourages it, for us to reach out to department heads and ask them about what's going on with their departments. Uh, not that we can give direction, but certainly we can get input from them of what's coming forward. So, uh, community development being a huge one, of course, uh, the primary one, I would think, that, that commissioners would like to have some insight on. Uh, you know, there's nothing to prevent us from calling, uh, uh, Community Development Director Tom Delara, and, and getting a briefing of what's, there's nothing in OML or county procedures that prevents that, is there? So-
Well, if you look at the organization chart for the county, who's at the top of the heap? We are. We are. Next one down is the county manager, and then he administers all the stuff below him. And I think it would be inappropriate for any of us to go to another, one of his reporting people to get some information. I think it's incorrect. We should probably funnel our requests through him.
That's a policy decision, which is above my pay grade, but, um, there is, for lack of a better word, former Navy, there's a chain of command, and there's a reason why it's there. I can tell you, during the floods, the last floods the county had, it was very frustrating for the county manager at that time, to deal with individual commissioners going out on-site, directing John Urb and staff, you need to move that caterpillar over there and dig out that. I mean, that's, talk about a recipe for dysfunction, if Commissioner X says, you need to go do this, and Commissioner Y says, no, you need to go do that, there's only one poor employee with one caterpillar, backhoe, who, who wins?
Okay. I think we need to proceed with your-
Well, all this is, I, again, I will, I will skip to one part of the open meeting law. The open meeting law requires an agenda that is clear and complete statement of the topics upon which the board will discuss. Clear and complete. That's what the agenda has to be. In other words, a person of ordinary intelligence should be able to read the agenda and know, oh, they're gonna talk about X topic. I've always felt there's kind of a, a conflict between clear and complete. I remember the master plan amendments. Clear is, we're gonna be making some changes to the master plan. Complete is, here is a hundred APNs that are gonna be impacted by this change to the master plan. I don't see how it's helpful to the public to list a hundred APNs. But the county actually received a, uh, open meeting law violation, which the county successfully defended, by the way, on that very topic. So there's this kind of inherent conflict between clear and complete. However, the general idea is that a person of ordinary intelligence could look on the agenda and, and discover, this is what the board is gonna be talking about, maybe I want to go down to the meeting and, and listen, or provide public comment. The other thing that's unique to our statute is that it must be, if you're going to take action, if the board is gonna take action, it must be prefaced with, for possible action. Again, so the public knows, oh, they're not just gonna be talking about this, 'cause government talks about stuff all the time, but they're actually gonna be voting on this. So now is when I want to go down there. It's for possible action. Now, earlier today, we had, uh, on the nomination and voting for the chair and vice chair, there was some interesting discussion about norms and procedures. I thought it was germane, because someone was saying, I have a, I have some concerns about nominating this particular person because of X, Y, Z, which involved following or not following the norms and procedures. I think that's germane to a discussion about whether you want to support or not support someone for a particular position. However, once the discussion snowballed into the norms and procedures, what they require, what they don't require, whether they should be changed, I thought Commissioner Hales did an excellent job of saying, you know, that's a good discussion, but really not germane now. And I had pushed my little light button on, and I was ready to speak, but I'm glad you spoke up, because I think, as legal counsel, I try to give the, the public and the board the benefit of speaking what they think is germane to the topic. Right? If they feel that this is information that is interesting and related to the topic, I, I try to give them the benefit of the doubt. But if it starts to snowball out, then we have to bring it back to, this is what the agenda is, election of a chair and vice chair. There's also another issue that's come up. The AG, the Attorney General's Office gets these a lot. The open meeting law deals with the collective, um, collective deliberation or action by the board, a majority of the board, a quorum of the board. So, the question comes up with the rogue commissioner, or the rogue board member, that out of the blue, we're talking about approving, uh, whether to put a, a security camera system out at the fairgrounds. Pretty straightforward, I think. One commissioner decides that it's germane to the topic to talk about the surveillance state, and how government is watching all of what we do, and we need to be careful about this, and the, the UN is trying to take over our, our private pri- property rights, and we need to prevent any cameras from going in, in, in the county. Clearly, the UN policy is outside the jurisdiction control of this board, but sometimes a, a commissioner will, what I call the rogue commissioner, will go off on a tangent. The AG has, because they understand human nature, they don't get too excited if one person, one commissioner, one board member, kind of goes off on a tangent. It's when the others pile on and say, you're right, that's, you're right. That's when we need to timeout, stop. If the majority of the board feels that we should have that discussion, then we can put it on for a, a future agenda item. So, again, it's kind of a, something I've learned over the years, the AG tends to have some sympathy, because a full board can't control what one member may, may or may not do, or say. And again, I call that the rogue commissioner.
Because he's got a comprehensive view.
Well, yeah. I, I will say, i- there's another thing I should bring up. The First Amendment gives people the right to, to speak, freedom of expression, of speech, but there's a whole line of cases that talk about man or place, reasonable restrictions on public comment, First Amendment rights. The open meeting law helps provide a framework for that, for these public meetings. And so, for instance, some people have complained, or, I shouldn't say complained, they've had concerns about the time limit, three minutes. This is a, I, I have more stuff to say, and I know it's very important, and you all want to hear it. The open meeting law makes clear that as long as the board upfront tells everybody what the rules of the game are, that you can impose a three-minute time limit. You can also restrict comments that are disruptive to the meeting. One thing that, I, I will give another example, there was a group that came into public meetings and were loud and disruptive, and the intent was not to share their views, but to disrupt the meeting and prevent the board from able to, to even be able to deliberate and take a vote on the, on the matter. The open meeting law makes it clear that the chair, under your norms and procedures, can say, look, you're out of order, you're disruptive. And that is not to restrict the, the public's ability to speak, but rather, it facilitates everyone having an equal opportunity to speak to their elected representatives. Because it's possible for one person or a group of people to dominate the meeting and prevent the other members of the public from addressing their elected officials, or for the elected officials to hear everybody's voice on the matter, and to deliberate and ta- take action. So, for instance, and I get it, people will clap when they hear something they like, they'll boo when somebody says, says someone they don't like, or they'll interject comments when somebody says something that they approve of. All of those things are human nature, and they're understandable, but under the rules that the board has adopted and the chair enforces, everybody gets their three minutes, we don't interrupt, we don't interject, and even clapping, you have to stop while everybody's clapping, which prevents whoever's talking from being able to talk, without having to talk over the clapping. So that's another part of the open meeting law. There is, there are constitutional rights, there is the First Amendment, but the open meeting law provides a, helps provide a framework, so that we can have these public meetings without it degenerating into kind of a free-for-all, whoever can speak the loudest, or yell the loudest, or be the most, um, forceful. Any questions about that? We talked a little bit about this, it's called serial communications. It's where, when less than a quorum has met and discussed, like the two, and then you get a third person, it's kind of like, look, the two of us talked, you go talk to this commissioner, and I'll talk to that commissioner, and then we'll get back together, and we'll have this all squared away before the meeting. That is what the open meeting law is intended to prevent. And it kind of, it, it hearkens back to kind of Tammany Hall, Chicago-style politics, back room deals. That is not what the law is intended to allow, and I will say, from the commissioners I've worked with, all of them have always wanted to be transparent with the public. They've always wanted to try and explain to the public why they vote the way they do, why they do the things they do. And I think that's all the open meeting law is intended to do. I will say, the Attorney General's Office has noticed an increase in complaints that tend to be not so much transparency, access issues, but policy differences. In other words, the board will vote some way that they disagree with, and so they'll file an open meeting law violation, alleged violation, because of, they disagree with the policy that the board has taken. Again, as long as there's a compliance, everybody had, the agenda's clear and complete, everybody had an opportunity for public comment, that's what the open meeting law requires. It doesn't require particular outcomes. Um, I have a bunch of, um, examples or scenarios, but I will skip them. I think everybody kind of understands what serial communications are. Are there any questions on what we've discussed so far? The open meeting law does not prevent commissioners from reaching out to their constituents. It doesn't prevent you from going out to meet people. Um, some people have felt that's an open meeting law violation, 'cause you're, or unethical because you're going out to an applicant for liquor license, for example, or a developer, and going out, seeing the site, seeing how it may impact the neighborhood, that is not a violation. Um, I will provide this warning, though, all public officials must be extremely cautious about committing to how you will vote until you have heard all the evidence presented to you at a public hearing. It's very easy, when you're hearing stuff from your constituents, to say, oh my goodness, what a horrible thing. I, how could we even possibly consider doing this, voting this way? But reserve judgment, because again, the purpose of the open meeting law is for the public to be able to see you, process information, ask questions, and kind of see how you deliberate to come up with your eventual vote. I'll give you an example. Let us assume that the developer tells staff that he has received enough votes to get a project before, a project through and approved, before staff has made a recommendation or a public hearing has occurred. Such commitments not only deny the public a right to be heard, but also exposes the board to allegations that they have violated the open meeting law. It can also be potentially embarrassing when, after a commissioner, or a bot- public body member hears all the facts, you have to change your mind, and you do not support the project. You've, you didn't, you didn't, you changed your vote. That's embarrassing. If you privately tell someone, oh yeah, I'm gonna vote this way, but then once you get all the facts, and you hear public comment, you change your vote- but then once you get all the facts and you hear public comment, you change your vote based on the facts, that's embarrassing. So, I'm big bold on my little, on my little PowerPoint and says, do not do it. Don't do it. Don't prejudge an application. Reach out all you want, get information, but don't prejudge any agenda item. Keep an open mind until the, until at least you hear public comment. The Nevada Supreme Court has stated, we have acknowledged that the open meeting law is not intended to prohibit every private discussion of a public issue. Instead, the open meeting law only prohibits collective deliberations or actions where a quorum is present. Again, keeping in mind that idea of serial communication. You can talk to your fellow commissioners about issues. You, you can share your concerns with them. Just don't vote, don't tell them how, how others are going to vote, don't tell them what other people are thinking. I give this example every year, I think it's a funny one. It's from, this is from the Islander Reporter from Lee County, Florida. "An unnamed committee of unknown members will apparently be tasked with yet-to-be-determined duties regarding unspecified actions of the Sarasota Police Department for an undetermined period of time, under the guidance of an unknown law enforcement consultant." That is not what a clear and complete agenda item is about. That's an, it's, that's an actual, uh, report from the Islander Reporter. That is not what people are hoping to receive from their public officials. They want to know, again, what's clear and complete, what is the board going to be talking about that day? There are certain noticing requirements. Uh, does the board have an interest in knowing that? Usually staff handles that, the posting of the notice, the posting on the Nevada State website. Do you have an interest in learning about those technical details? If not, I will skip it. Thankfully, uh, the county manager's office has a great staff and they do a great job in conjunction with the clerk's office to make sure that the agendas are posted timely and that the notices are sent out. There is one, there's a common misperception that if a required notice under a different provision of Nevada law is not followed, that there's a violation of the open meeting law. For instance, uh, land use and zoning. Often there's a publication that's required, both in the newspaper and on-site. A little placard is put on the property. If that doesn't occur, people will think, oh, you violated the open meeting law. No. They violated another provision of the law, but they did not violate the open meeting law. Um, it goes without saying, I think in the age of COVID, everybody understands that video conferences can occur. Commissioners like Commissioner Rice can participate via video conference and members of the public, although they don't have the right to that, it is provided as a courtesy to them so that they can participate remotely. Public comment must occur twice, once before any action occurs and then either at the end of the meeting or during the meeting when, for possible action items occur. For our board, we take a belt and suspender approach. There's opening public comment, there's closing public comment. And for most, for possible action items, the board will also take public comment. So, for most of this board's meetings, the public comment is allowed for three, three times, the beginning, the end, and when for possible action items are heard. Public comment needs to be germane, it needs to be on the topic that's for that particular agenda item. Um, even open, opening public comment and closing public comment are broad. But even then, it has to be within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Talking about US immigration policy, although very fascinating, this board has no control over it. So, the chairman is well within his or her right to terminate that public comment. Um, another issue that comes up is people in the past have, during public comment, alleged ethical violations. That is not within the jurisdiction and control of this board when it comes to, for instance, county commissioners. A county commissioner cannot remove another county commissioner. The commission on, the Ethics Commission has control over ethical violations and the AG, if necessary, will prosecute that. So, when people during public comment want to attack the ethics of a county commissioner, I generally, the chairman in the past have allowed them to speak, to let them vent, but it's not required because this board has no control over whether or not a particular commissioner is ethical or has violated the ethics laws. The Nevada Commission on Ethics has jurisdiction over that matter. Similarly, personal attacks should not be allowed during opening public comment. Under Nevada's open meeting law, any discussion regarding someone's character, competence, or alleged misconduct requires written, written advance notice to the individual. It is very popular, it has been very popular, but thankfully not so much anymore. People will come during public comment and make personal attacks against, uh, public employees and public officials. That should not occur. If there are issues regarding the ethics or competence of a county employee, that should go to the county manager who you supervise and control. If there's a criminal, criminal misconduct, it can be referred to the sheriff's office, who will then investigate and make a referral to the district attorney's office for possible criminal prosecution. If there's a violation of, say, the state contractors' laws, the state contractors' board has control over licensing of those with different licenses. Again, a public body may place limitations on caustic personal attacks made by members of the public during the public comment period. Um, that cites a federal court case. And it's also found in the Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Manual. And there's an OML opinion 2001-22 that reinforces that public comment is not a forum for making personal attacks. And if I may indulge, my personal indulgence, we try to live by the golden rule. We would not want to treat others as we do not want to be treated. And being attacked by surprise in public comment, when there's no real meaningful way to respond, is, is wrong. And so, when it comes to public comment, it's best to keep in your mind, follow the golden rule, treat others as you would like to be treated. Besides that, um, open meeting law doesn't allow you to make those kind of unwarranted personal attacks. Um, we spoke about this briefly, but if a person willfully disrupts a meeting to the extent that it is practical for the public body continue, the person may be removed from the meeting and may be charged with a misdemeanor. It is also important to note that the chairperson can, without a vote of the public body, declare a recess. I know there have been some jurisdictions where the board is ideologically split and the chairman may belong to one viewpoint and members may be on a different viewpoint. There's been some, some question whether the, the chairman can take a recess without a vote. It's quite clear that the chair can, has that inherent power to declare a recess without a vote so that a disruption in the meeting can be handled, however that may be. So, any questions regarding those fun and interesting topics? If any member of the public has questions, I'm happy to meet with them afterwards. If, if there are any members of other bodies, like the Planning Commission or any of the GIDs, have questions, I'm also happy to meet with you and discuss any questions you may have. I view the open meeting law kind of like that old show Quincy. It's fascinating, the opening of the Quincy, he's a medical examiner. It showed all these recruits and he throws back the, the sheet off the cadaver because he's excited to go into it and all the recruits fade and fall. And I'm sure that's how many of you view the open meeting law. It's like, this is so boring, I want to drop and go to sleep. But I find it fascinating. Um, there are provisions for closed meetings. They are still subject to the open meeting law, but they're close to the public and that involves the character, alleged misconduct, professional competence of certain employees. Unfortunately, not the county manager, that has to be public. To administer a grade examinations or consider an appeal resulting from an examination administered by the public body. Those are closed meetings, which means they're still subject to the open meeting law, but they're not open to the public. There are what we call non-meetings, and though the Attorney General has used that term. These are meetings that are not considered meetings for purposes of the open meeting law. In other words, you're clearly meeting, but they're not considered a meeting under the definition of the open meeting law. One of those is confidential meetings with your attorney to discuss pending or threatened litigation. For purposes of the open meeting law, it isn't a meeting. So you don't have to take notice, you don't have to take minutes, you don't take, you know, post-notice. As far as the open meeting law occurs, it's not a meeting. Now, I will give you a, a warning about this. Superintendent Martinez, I think it was Washoe County School District, they had a closed meeting, a, to, a non-meeting, to discuss Superintendent Martinez's performance and his potential termination and a severance package. They held that outside the purview of the public. The open meeting law violation was alleged and it was upheld. Again, the purpose of the attorney-client meeting is to meet with your attorney. In that particular case, they brought Superintendent Martinez into the meeting to discuss the allegations against him and his potential severance. And the AG said, that's not, that violates the open meeting law. That's, if your threatened litigation is from your superintendent, you can't bring him into the meeting to discuss the allegations against him and his potential severance package. There are a lot of rules regarding the keeping of minutes, having materials available to the public. I will skip to some of the stuff that you may be more interested in. If there is a violation of the open meeting law, you have an opportunity to cure it. For instance, if during a break, there are two commissioners out in the hallway talking about something that's on the agenda because they really want to talk about it, that's not a violation of the open meeting law because there's only two of five. But if a third one comes up and joins their conversation in the hall, you now have an open meeting law violation. And, that has happened before. The way to cure that is as soon as you come back in, the chair or your legal counsel can announce to the public, during the break, a quorum of the commissioners met and they discussed this topic and this is what was said. So now, what was said privately is now available to the public and that's how you cure it. However, again, without, goes without saying, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Try not to talk about business out in the hallway during a break. Talk about the weather, talk about football teams, don't talk about business. Um, if you discuss, if there was improper notice of the meeting, you can convene the meeting for the sole purpose of saying, um, it wasn't properly noticed and we're going to reconvene this meeting. And then, take your closing public comment and end the meeting. And then properly notice it and reschedule all those items. Each member of the public body that attends a meeting in violation of the open meeting law, with knowledge of the violation, is guilty of a misdemeanor and is subject to a civil penalty of $500 for the first offense, $1,000 for the second, and $2,500 for every offense thereafter. So there's an escalating penalty. There's also the possibility for a willful violation of removal from office. I will highlight something though, it says with knowledge of the violation. As with the Ethics Commission, if you ask legal counsel a question regarding the open meeting law and you rely on good faith on that legal advice, you will not be found of, guilty of a, a willful violation, excuse me. In essence, your attorney is an insurance policy. If you rely on good faith on the advice they give, you will not be found guilty of a willful violation. However, you may still be collectively, uh, found in violation of the open meeting law, which means you'll have to take corrective action. What that means is that you have to, on the next agenda, there's an agenda item for possible corrective action, list out what it was that you did wrong, do a mea culpa to the public that you violated the open meeting law, and you redo it. So it's a do-over with some embarrassment. Again, all penalties that have an impact on individual board members and not collectively on the board, require a showing of a willful violation. So as long as you act in good faith, particularly if you rely upon legal counsel, you will not be subject to the worst penalties, the individual penalties. I appreciate the time, I will conclude. "The goal in requiring that deliberations take place at meetings that are open and public is that committee members make a conscientious effort to hear viewpoints on each issue so that the community can understand on what their premises are based, add to those premises when necessary, and intelligently evaluate and participate in the process of government." The open meeting law is intend to allow the people to see how you make the sausage. Why did you vote the way you did? Why did you, why did you vote that stupid way that you did? Because they may disagree with you, but at least they will see how you came to that conclusion. And at the end of the day, as citizens, that's all we can ask, is that you're transparent in what you're doing. And that's what the open meeting law is intended to do, provide transparency on the process of government. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Mr. Ritchie, I have a couple of questions. Number one, just, just for clarification purposes, are our town boards, our GIDs, and our advisory boards that we're going to appoint tomorrow, are they subject to open meeting law also?
As a general rule, yes. There are, yes. If they are not subject to it, um, they will be told that. But, there's a whole nother section I didn't go over that talks about delegated authority. But, pretty much all the ones you're going to be appointing are subject to the open meeting law.
Okay. Secondly, and I know you skipped over this area, but, uh, I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding. Uh, there is a 72-hour, basically three-working-day requirement for all agendas to be posted to the public.
That's correct. 9:00 AM, three business days.
Items that are not noticed on the agenda cannot be added by this board or the public.
That's correct.
Okay. Items that are on the agenda, however, can be removed, postponed, tabled for further action, later action. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Unless there is a time requirement imposed by county code. For instance, development agreements, those, those, those kind of things.
The open meeting law would not impose that deadline. But as you mentioned, there's other, either NRS or county code requirements that may not allow that to be, that item to be continued.
Okay. Uh, one thing that I noticed you did not mention is social settings.
Yes.
So, uh, it's perfectly all right, uh, for us to attend a social function, Christmas party, birthday party, Fourth of July celebration, parade, whatever. It's, it's perfectly okay, if I, if I understand it correctly, for all five of us to be in attendance for that event. But we should certainly avoid talking about business.
That is correct. I, I skipped over that part because of brevity. Social, social meetings, social gatherings, conferences, workshops, where you gather information. It's when you gather as a quorum to deliberate over future action or to take action that the open meeting law gets triggered.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any, Commissioner Hales, Commissioner Turkanyan, Commissioner Nosad, Commissioner Rice, any additional questions, comments?
No, sir. I think he covered the subject matter quite well.
Okay. Very good.
Before, I'm sorry.
Please.
You talked about social gatherings. I forgot, one area of concern is social media, communications. There has been, the AG has noticed that there is an increasing use of like cell phones, iPads during the meeting. It goes without saying that commissioners should not be texting each other about what's going on in the meeting. Because if you're communicating with each other, that needs to occur in a public setting. Because, again, the whole purpose is so that the public can see the questions, the concerns that you have. And I will also, this, I'm not going to talk about today, but public records requests. If you're texting each other about county business and somebody notices that, if I was them, I would, and I thought you were doing some hanky-panky, I would do a public records request the next day for all of your communications on the board meeting day. And that way, I would see all the texts that you said, including maybe some of the unflattering things you, I'm sure none of you ever do it, but unflattering things you may be saying about people during public comment. Also, the other thing I didn't mention I should is that if there's a quorum of you, it doesn't matter what setting it is. For instance, if you all belong to the Elks Club, and you start talking about county business, you're going to be subject to open meeting law. I know it's at an Elks function, but if there's a quorum of you and you're all talking about this great, this great thing the county should be doing, you're going to fall, you're going to foul the open meeting law. And with that, I promise I'm done. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Nosad.
You said, request for the records. Is that from our county phones or our personal phones?
Chairman, if I may, that's an excellent question. You've all been given, been provided a county phone. However, if you transact county business on your personal phone, your personal email account, guess what? It's now county. Those records can be accessed. So again, please, it's another topic. Please, if you're going to transact with your constituents, talk about county business, use your official accounts, your official phone, your official county account. Because if you use your personal account, as legal counsel, I'm going to be obligated to go through all of your emails to make sure that you forget one when we have a public records request. And I don't want to read through all of your personal emails.
Well, I can guarantee it.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. We appreciate this presentation. And once again, I wanted to make sure that we put on the record that our advisory boards and our town boards and your GIDs are also subject to this. So I think that's an important thing for, and I believe that's why a lot of folks are here or online, is to make sure that they complied with that aspect. So thank you very much again. With that, my computer is showing it's 1:40. Can we take another 10-minute break? Be a good idea? Okay. So we'll return at 10 till 2. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session. It's 1:50. I believe all five commissioners are present. So we will go into item number five. I was asked earlier if we were going to take a lunch break, and the answer was we have decided to power through the next two items without a lunch break. So anyways, item five, presentation only. Once again, public comment will not be taken on this. Presentation by Douglas County Community Development Department, staff on land use, planning and development applications, and the respective roles of the Douglas County Community Development Staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board of County Commissioners, being presented by Ms. Kate Morales O'Neal, Principal Planner.
Thank you, Chairman. Kate Morales O'Neal, Principal Planner, Community Development. I do want to start out today by saying I moved here in January of 2020. I became a part of leadership Douglas County, and I knew after participating that how special this community was, and that I wanted to work for this community. And my fearless leader next to me reminded me today of what people are like in this community, because I got a phone call about three hours ago that I had flooding at my house. I live in Ruins Straw. I had told Tom, "Tom, I gotta go. Hopefully, I'll be back," and he followed me in his truck, and he helped me load sandbags. So our pants are soaking wet. I got to change my shirt, he didn't, and I got to blow-dry my hair, and his hair is still wet. So we're sorry we look a little disheveled, but I appreciate the sense of community. And I do want to wish all of you a very happy and healthy New Year, and want to congratulate our newly-elected Commissioner Hales, and the reelection of Commissioner Rice, who's joining us via Zoom, and thank all of you for your time today to present an overview of planning, land uses, and processes. So the presentation will look familiar to most of you, and it will be new to others. I know you've already had a morning filled with training and a long few days ahead of you, so I will try to keep this as brief and concise as possible. So what is planning? Why do we plan? So I want to begin with a few quotes from the American Planning Association that really summarize our role in planning and how important it is to our communities. The first being, "The goal of planning is to maximize the health and economic well-being of residents in ways that reflect the unique needs, desire, and culture of those who live and work within the community. Cities and counties need to consider what can and should happen to a community, how it should grow and change, and what it should offer residents 10, 15, or 20 years into the future. Planning establishes goals and policies for directing and managing the future growth and development of a community or region." The most important thing, I believe, in planning is proper planning, and how it helps us improve our community and its members. How do we accomplish this? Let's take a look at the key components to proper planning. First, proper planning must develop a common vision. This will increase buy-in and effectiveness of plans, and save money by avoiding duplication, sizing facilities properly, and promoting efficient and cost-effective investments. It also needs to create a sense of place and reinforce sense of community by incorporating architectural, environmental, and aesthetic elements as part of the planning to connect people to their community. We need to protect and enhance property values and reinforce the sense of community. How do we do this? Well, by enhancing property values with a community that plans for parks, and trails, and playgrounds, transit, and other amenities. In relation to planning for parks and trails, this directly relates to how planning safeguards public health and safety. Planning provides opportunities with access to physical activity and healthy foods. Public safety is protected with strong building codes and other regulations to prevent fire or flooding, as well as designing buildings, parking lots, streets, and neighborhoods to meet future demands, or, I'm sorry, to prevent fire or flooding, as well as designing parks, lots, streets, and neighborhoods to reduce opportunities for crime. We also need to provide public facilities and infrastructure by preparing communities to meet future demands for public services and facilities, such as water and sewer systems, roads and transit lines, fire and police stations, schools, parks, and libraries. We also need to improve economic development. Well-planned communities offer residents and businesses a range of convenient and affordable choices. We need to ensure proper planning protects the environment and conserves resources. By identifying important natural and cultural resources, conserve these resources, and protect the environment. Lastly, proper planning needs to set clear expectations for all those involved in the process: landowners, boards, commissioners, county staff reviewing the application in order to help minimize any conflict. As part of any land use in Nevada, you may have heard of our master plan, which was updated in 2020. For those of you unclear what the master plan is and why is it so important, let's take a look. First of all, the master plan, NRS, requires a master plan to be created when a planning commission has been established, which we obviously have here in Douglas County. The master plan is an official document, first prepared and adopted by the planning commission, then adopted by the governing board, being the Board of County Commissioners. The master plan is a long-term general plan for physical development of the county, again, typically looking 10 to 20 years into the future. The master plan identifies current issues and needs into the community, and the master plan is general and summarizes goals, but does not indicate detailed regulations. We see more specific or detailed regulations in our county development code. Lastly, the master plan includes actions to achieve the goals, and we see this in the implementation part of our master code, our master plan. That shows what are the actions, and how do we get there and accomplish each goal. Now that we see what the plan is and why it's important, let's take a look at how we implement the plan. First and foremost, it starts with our development code and zoning land for uses. So historically, zoning is a separation of a community into zones that regulates land uses and the intensity of development. The goal of zoning is to ensure that neighboring land uses are compatible. In Douglas County, which we refer to Douglas County Code Title 20, is the consolidated development code that regulates this development. Before approving or denying a project, local officials must determine whether the project complies with the provisions of Title 20. We see here some of these provisions from our development code. We look at when determining the validity of a project, from zoning, land division, flood plan regulations, public facility improvement standards, TDRs, and processes for applications for planning, engineers, and for building permits. Let's take a look at who does what in the planning process, beginning with the Community Development Department staff. So we are responsible for day-to-day implementation of the master plan and Title 20. We review development applications per the master plan and Title 20. We also are responsible providing a high level of customer support. We track and issue building zoning permits, review plans, and respond to development questions on a daily basis. We also prepare public notice for hearings, provide technical advice to the planning commission and yourselves, Board of County Commissioners, during public hearings. And we also administratively hear minor development applications, such as a design review, or minor variance, or parcel maps. So this slide is an important one regarding our advisory bodies in Douglas County, which are the town of Genoa, the town of Minden, and the town of Gardenville. Per Douglas County Code, all zoning permits and tentative parcel maps, subdivision maps, within town boundaries, must be reviewed by the town prior to final action. There are a few exceptions for minor sign reviews, temp permits, things like that. No final action shall be taken until a formal written recommendation has been received by the director or hearing body. Failure of an advisory body to make a recommendation may not operate to deprive an applicant of statutory rights, meaning there are timelines that are set by NRS for some of these items to be heard by various boards and commissions. Actions by an advisory body are evidence to be considered by the final decision-maker. The record generated by the advisory body may be considered. So evidence for staff to consider, planning commission to consider, to the Board of County Commissioners to consider, and staff will add to the record evidence that is generated by any advisory body. We also have the Planning Commission is a very important part of the planning process. There are seven member boards, seven members on the Planning Commission appointed by you, the Board of County Commissioners. The members serve a four-year term. They are required by NRS to be established in a county with a population of over 45,000, which I believe Douglas County is. We are now at 50,000. The Planning Commission reviews amendments to the master plan, zoning map, text amendments, subdivision maps, and planned unit developments, or PDs, and recommends to the Board of County Commissioners. The Planning Commission approves special use permits, major variance requests, and variance to improvement standards. The PC is a recommending body, just as the towns are, so they are not the final decision-maker, with the exceptions approvals for a special permit or the major variances. The exception to that would be if the Planning Commission was to deny a special use permit, the applicant could appeal that decision, and that appeal would come to the Board of County Commissioners. Also, the Planning Commission meets and holds a public hearing the second Tuesday of each month. And now to the final decision-maker in the planning process, which is you, the Board of County Commissioners. So no pressure. Your role is vital in the planning process as you evaluate recommendations from Planning Commission, staff, and public comment, final decision-maker on master plan amendments, zoning map, text amendments, subdivision maps, and you also hear those appeals that I just mentioned of special use permits and variances from the Planning Commission. So I have a brief flow chart of how the process works, starting with a typical application and how it proceeds through the process. So the first thing is a pre-application, and it would be a meeting held with the applicant, county staff, and then towns or GIDs, if that was applicable to the project at hand. And we really encourage these pre-application meetings, because it gives us an opportunity to meet with the client and determine if there's any issues that we see in this project. So we want to get those kinks out right away before the applicant spends money on filing fees, or design work, or, you know, supplying us with documents. So we really, really encourage those pre-app meetings. Once the application is submitted, it is reviewed for completeness during those first three days. So if you had six documents that you have to provide for that application, we ensure that all six documents were submitted, and the application is complete. We then distribute the application and the supporting documents to various departments, again, applicable to the project. And then typically, a week or two after that, we have an internal projects meeting with staff. So we discuss the project, and we take notes. Again, we're identifying things that there still might be some issues, or things that might need to be amended. So we send to the applicant the notes that we've taken, and it's either saying, "Hey, we need more information," or corrections are required prior to us moving forward with the application and the review. Ideally, the applicant will address our comments, and amend the items, and give it back to us, and we can move forward. But sometimes, a subsequent meeting would be needed, because they need more clarification, or more details regarding our comments. Once the review is complete, staff prepares a staff report for each of the applicable advisory bodies, including the Board of County Commissioners. The staff report will either have recommendations of approval, or findings and justification for denial. The report is laid out for you, starting with the summary of the project, including some background on the site, images, descriptions of the zoning, the surrounding zoning, and those type of things. If the project is within the town of Minden, Gardenville, or Genoa, then the project would be heard at their own town board meeting, and they would make a recommendation to staff. Staff then makes a recommendation to the Planning Commission, who in turn makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. You, as the Board of County Commissioner, makes the final decision to either affirm or deny the Planning Commission recommendation. So I have gone over these previously, so you've heard me say these, so I'll skim through these. So the amendment to the master plan, really, review cycle is considered twice a year. These amendments are approved by the Planning Commission, and then adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. Zoning map amendment, zoning text amendments, again, heard by Planning Commission, and then the board in any given month. The board sees amendments by ordinances after two readings. And then we have the Plan Development Overlay, or PD. Again, this is just another zoning layer. May be proposed over an overlay zone within a zoning district, but the use and intensity must be compatible, and that's key, with the base zoning and the master plan. A few more here. The tentative parcel map. This is land division creating up to four parcels, and this is heard by staff administrative hearing panel, meaning the administrative hearing panel consists of staff members. The tentative subdivision map is land division creating five or more parcels, and it is heard by the Planning Commission, and then again, you, Board of County Commissioner. And then you've heard me mention the special use permits. And they're usually generally compatible with the zoning, but this gives Planning Commission really an opportunity for an additional layer of review. These are heard by the Planning Commission unless appealed. Like I mentioned earlier, if a special use permit was appealed, the applicant has the right to take that appeal to the Board of County Commissioners. So what are the findings of fact? So Douglas County Development Code Title 20 continues, contains objective standards that commissioners must evaluate and apply to the facts presented during a meeting. So ultimately, as I said, the staff report is going to end on the findings of fact, or the evaluations of those findings by staff, to determine if we feel that the applicant has met the findings, or they failed to meet the findings. The findings are found in the NRS, and then there are some that are particular to Douglas County. You can see from looking at this list, the findings of facts are very important, and you want to pay close attention to those when reviewing staff reports. It brings transparency, order, and predictability. It allows the applicant and public to understand the facts, factors the commission considered, provides a rational structure to guide meetings, and the burden is on the applicant to prove that the standards have been met. Staff will always provide an unbiased analysis of the findings, and comments made by the applicant, public, staff, or commissioners should always relate to the findings of facts. And this must be followed, most importantly, in order to reduce the chance of any litigation. So thankfully, I am done. That wraps up my presentation, and again, I appreciate your attention and your dedication to civic duty in our community. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them for you, or my wingman is here for ones I can't answer. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Yes, I'm going to start up with Mr. Rice. Commissioner Rice, did you have any questions?
No, it was very thorough and complete, and a good review of the planning process. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Noah said.
Yes, getting next to the microphone here. There's a lot of steps involved in this, in which I think it would be beneficial for a commissioner to attend those meetings. Is that possible?
Yeah, it's open to the public. So are you talking about Planning Commission meetings, or the administrative hearing panel?
Yes.
Yeah, those are all open to the public. We do post agendas, and you're more than welcome to come.
And, excuse me, where are the agendas and the meeting information posted?
It's on the same portal that your county commission meetings are on. It's on there.
Very well. Thank you, sir. And well done, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Noah said.
Commissioner Hales?
No questions, but as a new commissioner, I just really love how this is complete but concise. This is like going to be printed and, you know, saved, so I can come back to it. Thanks.
Commissioner Tarkanian, any other questions? Okay. Well, I have a couple of questions. Number one, you mentioned, I believe it's on Slide 77, that the, is it the Community Development Department that can approve minor variances unto themselves?
Yes.
And what is the percentage there of, what's considered a minor variance?
The Tom Delayer, for the record, Community Development Director, is usually varying from less than 20% of whatever the setback, or whatever it is that they're asking for, to vary.
Could you give us an example of 20% of what? Just give me an instance of where that happened.
Okay. If you have a setback from your property line of 10 feet, 20% is up to two feet. So, you know, we can approve up to two feet off of that if for some particular reason. Since I've started, we've started cracking down a little bit more on those issues, and making it per code, which is required if you have to prove a hardship. And proving a hardship sometimes doesn't outweigh the person wanting to put it in that location. And so we do, we have been pushing back on those quite a bit.
And I can add too. I've been here seven months, and I think I've only seen one come across the department in just the last seven months. So I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we get those very often.
Question on your vision of the master plan. It's always been my understanding that that is a target, and schedule it out 10 to 20 years. And how can you, how do you envisionize what happens five, seven, 10 years from now?
Well, I think, again, I'm going to reiterate, proper planning, right, in the master plan, and what the whole goal, that's why there are action items to determine how are we going to get there. What is this going to look, what's our town, our community going to look like in 10 years? What if our population increases? What do we do? So I think that's the goal of the master plan. It is more general. We use the development code to be more specific and detailed as far as regulations go, but I think the master plan is really, you know, our outline, and what, you know, this is where we want to go, and where we want to get to, to ensure that we're prepared for the future, and whatever it might entail.
And what's your vision of population expansion in 20 years?
I'll let you take that one.
Wow. I don't, I don't have a number off the top of my head, Commissioner Noah said, but it's, it really is depending on the demand on the housing here. You know, last year, we saw quite a demand, and the interest rates were prime, and we've, you know, we barely even hit our 2% mark. That was the first year since the growth management ordinance was in play, that we actually touched that threshold of 2%. And now we're half of that this year already. So, you know, it really depends on the market. So I would say we're, you know, probably 2,000 people at the most a year, maybe, if that. It's, we're at 50,000 people. I think when I started, we were at 48, and I think it depends on which numbers you're looking at. Maybe it's even only 1,000, 500 to 1,000 people per year, is what it's looking at, like, as far as growth goes.
As far as growth goes, we have a large bank of permits as a result of the initiative we spoke of. Realized that with each house, got at least two people. Okay? And that means, as we go on and on and project into the future, and say we double our population to 100,000, now we're going to have a heck of a lot more houses here, and I think that's contrary to the master plan's vision of keeping this county rural. Now, just as a sidelight, or an anecdotal observation, I got here in 2001. And at that time, one commissioner said at one time in like 2002, you could fire a howitzer down the length of 395 and not hit anything. So all you have to do now is along about, oh, 6 o'clock in the morning, I can look out from my house and see 395, and nothing but cars of lengths going. And it stretches from here all the way, or from here all the way to my house. So that's one of the things I'm really concerned about, is are doing a bang-up job to allow developers to do what they want to do.
Thank you. Also, and I hate to do this, but I'm a stickler. I can read War and Peace and find the typos. Okay? So anyways, on page, on Slide 80, So anyways, on page, on Slide 80, Board of County Commissioners, you have a star there at the bottom. Variances associated with an application heard by the B O C C are also heard by the B O C C.
I actually, that was corrected this morning. I'm sorry, I was supposed to bring the corrected version. I think, I think the actual presentation, I'm going to blame it on the flood, I just, the flooding at the house caused a delay. But I did correct it, I believe, on the, what was actually shown up here, but I apologize. Well done. I used to be a teacher, you'd get a star for that. So, well done, Chairman Gardner. But yes, you're correct, variants associated with an application heard by the Planning Commission would also be heard by the Board of County Commissioners.
I suspected that was the case, but I just.
Yes. So thank you for pointing that out, I truly appreciate it.
Okay. And so, and this question is more for Community Development Director, Tom Delaire. Are we completely, are we back up to a complete complement of staff? Are we still short?
We are almost there, again. We were there for about two, three, I don't know, maybe two months, and then we lost a couple, and we're, we're getting close. The counter technicians are back. We have offered the positions to two new individuals, and so we're going through the HR process on that. Otherwise, planning is full, engineering is full. We did get a notice from our, one of our newest engineering inspectors, so that will be going out for posting here shortly. Possibly, we're working with HR to see if we can recruit the next individual in line, but we're, we're trying to get them, keep them, keep them here.
The reason I ask that is I know that staffing has been a, has caused us to not be able to dive into Title 20 and the reorganization of Title 20, as much as we would have liked. Do we anticipate that Community Development can accomplish that task in 2023?
It is my goal, yes, absolutely, to have the county code.
You're not going to set a timetable.
I've actually started working on it, so that's, you know, we have actually pulled it open, and are in that process. I even have a plan, if you'd like to review it.
So we anticipate keeping our Planning Commission busy in that regard?
Right, right, yep.
And the, I know the master plan, as Ms. Morales indicated, was updated in 20, but actually, that 20-year update was due in 17, so that, that was delayed for a couple of years. I don't know what, what the delay was, I wasn't involved with the board at that time. Is there any reason why we couldn't tackle the update earlier than, say, 25? I mean, could we, could we look at an updated Title 20, or not Title 20, but the master plan, also in 2023, or would that be too aggressive for you?
I wish I had more staff to do both of those. Let's pick one. Do you want Title 20, or do you want the master plan? I mean, we did in 2020, what we updated was just the text portion. I wasn't allowed to update the graphics on, on the master plan, on designating different zones, on where we were at from 1996, I believe is where the original one was. And so, we did the text, we updated the text, and everybody, hopefully, everybody still likes that. If there's some things that we need to update in there, I'd be happy to take it on. We were looking through the implementation plan right now, that was published, and there's a lot of tasks that we've accomplished in the last three years. And that, that's going to the Planning Commission this month to review and see what the goals are next month, next, this coming year, with their goals on the master plan. And I'm hoping that we can focus, that staff can still focus on the Title 20 update. That's really got to get done. It'll, it'll streamline everybody's job at my, in my department, and hopefully, the rest of the departments in the county, if we can get that updated.
Well, I guess if I had a preference of which one would be preferable, I think Title 20 is probably the one that needs to, to come first. So I, you know, that's my feeling, and actually, I'd like to ask the other Commissioners to voice their opinion on that as, as well, to kind of try to give you some direction as to where we need to go in 2023. So, Commissioner Rice, what are your, what are your thoughts, please?
I concur that Title 20 is something that really needs to be at the forefront, and the other is important, but I think Title 20 takes precedence.
Commissioner Noah Sad? I'm going to go down the line. I don't want to constantly be calling on Commissioner Hales to answer first, or Commissioner Tarkanian to, so Commissioner Noah Sad, what, what's your?
Yes, I agree with the Title 20. I do have a follow-up question, though. What is the number of shortfall of staff we have right now? 10, 15, two?
Well, two. We have two staff missing in our, my department, whether, yeah.
Title 20?
Title 20, Commissioner Tarkanian. I see, okay, okay. So I think, I think you have a consensus here, that we'd like you to, to continue to dip your toes in Title 20 and try to bring us an item.
And if I could.
Go to the Planning Commission, obviously, it has to go to the Planning Commission first, you know, so.
And again, Kate Morales, and you're principal planner. And if I, if I could, Chairman, I appreciate you, you getting the consensus, because for someone in the planning department, and I mentioned one of our duties, and we are on a daily basis getting questions about the code, and from someone who's only been here seven months, trying to navigate our code, it's like jumping in the deep end with nothing. So it is really confusing, and we can like search in three or four different areas to try to find an answer. So when Tom mentions that, as far as efficiency goes, Title 20 is such a priority as far as our efficiency goes, and the time we spend trying to find answers in the code. So it is very important, and I appreciate that, everyone realizing and understanding that. I know staff will be very appreciative when it gets done.
Yeah, thank you. You know, because I, as Mr. Delaire understands, I've sat in his office, and we've tried to look at different aspects of Title 20, and right now, we have like five, six, seven, maybe 10 computers in here, and we would have needed all 10, and probably another five, to look at one particular type of aspect, because it's so spread out. So, you know, that, I've, I've seen that over the last couple of years, a need to really get that done. So, so thank you. I don't have any other comments or questions, I really appreciate the job you did. Once again, a great, great presentation. We see this every year, but it's always good to be able to be reminded of it, and, and I agree with Commissioner Hales, it's nice to be able to have this as a five or six-page document that we can actually take a look at and, and absorb. So anyways, if no other Commissioners have questions, we'll move on.
I'll just have a comment about your jumping into the deep end. It's jumping into the deep end with an anchor.
Well said, well said, Commissioner, I agree.
Coming from a Navy man. Thank you very much. Now we get to item number six, and this is the last item before we go into closing public comment. This is for possible actions, so that will have public comment. Discussion to approve the appointment of county Commissioner's staff and alternatives to various Douglas County boards and committees. These boards, commissions, meetings include, but are not limited to, the Nevada Association of Counties, the Northern Nevada Development Authority, Carson Water Subconservancy District, Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, Law Library, Nevada Works, Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce, Carson Valley Visitor Authority, the Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, more formerly known as CAMPO, the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, TDVA, Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce, the Western Nevada Development District, the Regional Transportation Commission, Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District, State Line Stormwater Association, Joint Powers Waste Management, Tahoe Transportation District, Carson Valley Arts Council, the Audit Committee, the Quad County Coalition, China Spring Youth Camp, and Aurora Pines Girls Facility Advisory Council, the Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority, the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council, and the Debt Management Commission. Okay. And this is being presented by Mr. Kates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the very last page of your packet has a list of all the current appointments for your review. That's the same information we post on all of our regular meetings. I do have a spreadsheet to help us keep track, although unfortunately, this monitor's not working, so you may have to turn around and look at the screen if you want to keep track that way. So there's many positions to appoint, and they all have different rules. Some of them are statutory, some are county policy or code. So I'll go through each one, and some of these do need a current appointment, some of them, the current appointment is still valid and the term not expired, but we can go through each of those. So give me just a second to share this. Okay. Make that a little bigger, so it's a little easier to see. There we go. That's not bad. Okay. And as a, as the Chairman indicated, this is to appoint Commissioners to various boards and committees, as well as county staff. And of course, tomorrow, we'll be appointing members of the public to a whole variety of positions. So the first item, the first appointment is for the Audit Committee. Commissioner Noah Sad currently serves on the Audit Committee, has a one-year term. He's served two terms, so he's served for two years. So you would need to make an appointment for this current year for this particular position.
That's a two-year?
It's, it's a one-year.
It's a one-year, okay. And so, I think if the Commissioners are in agreement, well, as we go down through this, if Commissioner sees his name up there and doesn't wish to stay on that, he should indicate that, and we'll find a replacement. Or if they want to stay on it, they should indicate that, and no problems with the other Commissioners in that regard. Okay? So, is that okay with you? Is it?
I think because this is a one-year term, you would need to take some action to appoint to that.
Okay.
If you want to appoint Commissioner Noah Sad, I think you'd need to vote to do that.
Okay. So, but this requires, this is an action item, so it's going to require public comment. So what I'm suggesting is, as we go through this, you could put in the new name, or the name, and then we could go to, and after we have everything filled, then we can go to public comment.
Okay.
And then we can come back for a motion to approve as presented, perhaps.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Next appointment is to CAMPO, the Carson Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. This one probably requires a little bit of explanation. Commissioner Noah Sad was appointed to that last year. It is a two-year appointment, so that term is ending, and working with Commissioner Noah Sad and the Chairman, John Urb, has been filling that position on his behalf. John does a really good job, and has been a member of CAMPO historically. And for those that may not know, CAMPO is, is a transportation organization that is focused mainly on Carson City. It's, it's a metro area, it does reach into the North County of Douglas County, and a little bit into Johnson Lane area. So most of what they're focusing on is Carson City. We definitely have projects that, that come in, in the North County, but I'd say most of what they end up discussing, as I'm sure Commissioner Noah Sad can attest, is related to Carson City, more than, more than projects in our county.
Okay. Is there, I know Commissioner Noah Sad was previous on this, and then exited off of that. Is there a feeling that a Commissioner should serve on this versus staff? Commissioner Hales, Commissioner Tarkanian, Commissioner Rice?
I'm happy with staff handling it, it's right up his alley.
Okay. So we're in concurrence with leaving Mr. Urb's name on that?
How does Mr. Urb feel about it?
He's okay with it.
Okay, I thought he had, I thought he had volunteered. Was he voluntold?
Maybe both. Okay. Next appointment is the, hang on just a second.
Carson Truckee.
There's a little discrepancy between my two sheets here.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping in this process, pardon me for interrupting, Mr. Kates, but I hope the public is noticing, both here and online, that, that being a county Commissioner has much, many more responsibilities than just sitting up here twice a month.
Okay, sorry, the detailed spreadsheet I'm looking at was in a little bit different order, so it threw me off. So the Carson Truckee Water Conservation Conservancy District is a statutory body, four-year terms. Commissioner Rice was originally appointed in 2019, so we need another four-year appointment to this body.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. County Commissioner, maybe to cut this a little bit short, I am very happy with the Commissions and Boards that I sit on. I have been sitting on them for four years. I'm comfortable, I have my schedule worked out, and trust me, that takes some working out. And in any place where my name shows, I would be more than happy to continue with that position.
I support that.
So we leave, leave Rice there?
I would like to join a, another Lake Tahoe committee, the TRPA, so when we get down to that, maybe we could have some discussion.
That's, that's a later on appointment, but, yeah, okay. Okay, so we leave Rice there, Commissioner Rice there.
Okay. Moving on to the Carson Valley Arts Council, Commissioner Engels was the appointee from the Board.
I'd like to take that one. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Chairman Gardner, I'd like to take that one, if everyone's okay with that.
I was hoping you were. Previously, Commissioner Engels was the primary, and, and I was the alternate. However, they meet on the third Monday of the month, and so I had a conflict there, so I had to leave as the alternate. And I know we appointed Jennifer Davidson as the alternate, but, so I think she's been filling in for us, but I certainly have, I was hoping that you would want to serve on the Arts Council. So without objection from other Board members, I think we should put Commissioner Hales on that. Is there a Commissioner that would like to serve on the alternate, or should we leave Ms. Davidson on, as the, as the alternate? Any feelings? I don't sense any objections, so why don't we go ahead and ask Ms. Davidson to continue in that role? Mr. Kates? Okay?
Okay, got it. Next appointment is for China Spring and Aurora Pines Girl Facility. So this one changed, you recently passed an ordinance to change the nature of the Advisory Committee. There is no longer a seat for a Commissioner on the Advisory Committee, however, they have an executive. an executive board that requires the appointment of one commissioner. And Commissioner Engels was appointed to that, and the term has expired.
I think Commissioner Hales kind of shook her head yes. I think that was an indication she was interested in serving on that. And that serves with Judge Todd Young also as...
Correct.
Yep. So and then we also, because of the, what we passed a couple months ago, this also is going to have commissioners from, or an appointment from, what, the other 15, 14, 15 counties on it?
So the Advisory Board has membership from all the counties, mostly JPO, Juvenile Probation Officers.
This is the executive committee, though, right?
This is the executive committee. It has two district court judges, one of whom's Judge Young, and a Douglas County Commissioner.
So, good. Okay. And we don't need an alternate for that?
No, their bylaws don't have any alternates for that position. Okay, next one is the Debt Management Commission.
I'll hang on to that one if I can.
No objection here? Aren't you getting tired of your 15-minute meetings?
Next item is the Law Library. Commissioner Tarkanian was appointed to that in 2021, and the term is expiring.
Commissioner Noasad has asked to take that, and I'm fine. Roger that.
Okay.
Okay, next item is the Nevada Association of Counties, a one-year term. Commissioner Tarkanian is the current appointee, and Commissioner Gardner is the alternate.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Tarkanian had talked about this, and we've, well, anyways, I will, I'm going to, I'm asking to resume my role as the primary appointee on that. Commissioner Tarkanian, you've indicated that you would prefer not to be the alternate? Oh, okay. Okay, so without objection, so we'll just switch places there again. Mr. Cates, with me being the primary and... Oops. Like I said, I'm a spell-check guy.
Okay, the next appointment is to the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District. Commissioner Tarkanian currently serves on that, and I believe the term has expired. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch up.
Apparently, apparently, does anybody else want that, I guess, is what he's suggesting? Okay.
Next appointment is Nevada Works. There are two appointments from the board to Nevada Works. This is a... I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the notes here. Yeah, so currently, we have Commissioner Engels appointed and Commissioner Noasad to two-year terms that both are expiring, or have expired.
I'll be glad to take that one over.
Okay, so you want to become the primary on that, the appointee, and then we'll need a...
Yeah, primary.
Primary, okay. What does Nevada Works do? Can you give us an explanation of that? Or not really?
I have a very vague notion of what Nevada Works does. I apologize.
Okay. So previously, Commissioner Engels was the primary and Commissioner Noasad was the alternate. So Commissioner Noasad indicated he wanted to be the primary. Commissioner Hales, would you entertain being the alternate on that? Okay, so we'll put...
So I'm sorry, Commissioner Hales is the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And I do know that their focus is on the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, but I've never followed their meetings, so I'm not quite sure the substance of what they do. Next item is Northern Nevada Development Authority. Commissioner Engels was appointed to that. The term is expiring, and Commissioner Gardner was the alternate. I would also just mention that I'm on the Executive Committee of NDA.
Your chart doesn't indicate there's an alternate on that, but I believe there is. Is there?
Yeah, I believe, yes.
Ms. Hales, would you be interested in doing that? Okay. Well, here's an opportunity to find out.
As primary?
Yes.
Okay. An alternate?
I guess unless another commissioner wants to be the alternate, I'm willing to stay the alternate on that. Never attended a meeting, but I haven't had to, so.
Okay, next item is the Quad County Coalition. This is kind of an informal committee. This is our lobbying efforts with our lobbyists, the Walkers, and we cooperate with the surrounding jurisdictions. So we'll have regular meetings during legislative session. Currently, that is Commissioner Gardner and Commissioner Rice.
I think both of us would like to remain on that.
Yes, sir.
In that, in that order.
Although I don't know if it's still the Quad County, because Carson City is not renewed with the Walkers, but everyone else has.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And the primary purpose of that, I believe, as I understand it, is the four surrounding counties really talk about the legislation coming before us and how it's going to affect the four counties.
Correct, and we're all pretty similar in size. Lyon, Carson City, and of course, Story's not quite as big as we are, but they share a lot of the same issues with us.
And Lyon County, right?
Yes, and Lyon, yes. I think we work pretty well together.
RTC?
RTC, this is a statutory committee, two-year terms, Commissioner Tarkanian and Commissioner Engels.
I believe that's incorrect.
Yeah, that is incorrect.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
I've been on the RTC for the last four years.
Yeah, sorry about that. Got to correct it. Commissioner Tarkanian, Commissioner Rice.
I would like to remain on that.
Okay.
Is that?
Okay.
Commissioner Noasad, okay. Okay. Next item is the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority for a four-year term, and that term also is, it's held by Commissioner Rice and also expired at the end of last year.
I'd like to retain that.
Okay, keeping with the Tahoe fame, the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Commissioner Rice currently serves on the TRPA.
This is an area I can free up some of Mr. Rice's time. I know about his busy schedule. I think it would be fun to have somebody from the Valley that could go up there and have some representation.
I've been on that board for the last four years, and I would like to retain it. I don't know why anybody from the Valley would be more interested in Lake Tahoe than the board member that represents Lake Tahoe. I think we'll need to take a vote on this one.
So I'll leave that one blank for now, and we can continue on.
Yeah, let's leave it blank.
Okay, the next item, or the next appointment is the Tahoe Transportation District, and Commissioner Rice currently holds that position.
Can you tell me who the alternate is? Travis Lee? I'm not familiar with that name.
Nor am I. I have no idea who that is.
You don't know who your alternate is?
Well, I'll tell you what, I've never missed a meeting up there, so.
Okay.
I don't see anything on my notes about an alternate for this one, so I'll take that out of there, and we'll circle back with Marsha and do some research. If we need to appoint somebody for that as an alternate, we can, we can do that at a later meeting.
Is there a commissioner that would like to serve as the alternate? Should... Okay.
That's really interesting when you jump right in there. I get to work with Cody Bass in South Lake Tahoe, drug dealers, so.
Okay.
Okay, next item is the Western Nevada Development District. Commissioner Tarkanian currently holds that appointment. Do you want to keep that?
I think it'd probably be a good idea if we had, you know, so we have Commissioner Hales at Northern Nevada Development Authority, so it'd probably be a good idea to keep somebody else on the other one.
Okay.
That's just my view.
Now, all the other appointments that are listed on this sheet, the terms are not ending currently, so you don't have to take any action on those unless any of the current members want to, want to change and don't want to continue to serve.
So the, and we've had this discussion, Mr. Cates, in regards to the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District, that's a, apparently that's a four-year term by two commissioners. However, it's catching Commissioner Engels in midterm. Now, is that regulated by our code? Is that regulated by CWSD? Because it doesn't make much sense to me to have a non-commissioner serve out another two years on that board.
For the record, Patrick Cates, my understanding is that is governed by the CWSD, and they may make some changes to that. There is some interest in changing that, just so terms were better staggered, but I think they have to take some action first before they can change those appointments.
Well, you know, for the, just for transparency's sake, okay, unfortunately, Commissioner Engels has not participated in that board for more than a year. And, and so while we have five votes on that board, two commissioners and a member at large, or community at large, and then two from the ag community, it's, it's kind of concerning to me that while we have the ability to have five votes, we really haven't had five votes on that board. And so...
So they have reached out to me to see if I'm interested, and I'd be happy, I'm willing to do that if it turns out that falls together.
So I guess my, I think if the rest of the commissioners concur with me, I think we should reach out to Commissioner Engels and see if he's going to participate. If he's not going to participate, would he please submit his resignation from that committee? So we could, they could bring it back to this body.
Very good. Yes, we can follow up on that and...
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other changes that you would like to make to current appointments?
Okay, I did want to recognize also down on SLUPACK, State Land Use Planning Advisory Council, that position is being fulfilled by the current Planning Commissioner Maureen Casey, and she has been very active on that committee, so I appreciate her continuing. She, that's a three-year term, so she has a couple more years, I believe, on that, but I appreciate her doing that. Okay, I guess that's where we are, right? Everybody, okay, so are we ready to go to public comment then?
No, I believe we need to talk about the TRPA.
I think we should, I think we should go to public comment, and then we can come back and we can figure that issue out, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, public comment will be Commissioner, Commissioner Noasad, if you can get the timing clock? Okay, so at this time, we'll go to public comment on this item number, what is it? Six? Yep, item number six.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before you start the timer, please know that I have reviewed the OML with regard to my statement. According to the way this agenda item reads, it says "Discussion to approve the appointment of county commissioners, staff and alternates." So here's my comment. It fits within the guidelines of the OML. I would appreciate your undivided attention. Thank you. Going to be quite frank and direct about what I posted on the internet, which appears on the Douglas County Watch page, as well as my personal page, regarding the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting, which is today. Notice, next week, on January 9, 2023, a new chairman and a new vice chairman will be elected to spearhead the best interests of Douglas County citizens. This will be one of the most important meetings of the year, and will set the tone for the next 364 plus one days. Under the current leadership of Chairman Mark Gardner and Wesley Rice, Douglas County is being locked down into an unprecedented debt ceiling. The highest capital investments in the history of Douglas County are being maladministered without proper input and with total disregard for due process. Fact check and consider this, Douglas County. Douglas County Sheriff receives the lion's share of the county budget for millions of dollars of expenditures which are rolled into the budget without proper discussion or public input. While remodeling the existing Geolik DSO facility to the tune of millions of dollars, your city-elect intends to lock us all down with a new Geolik facility, which could easily run upwards of $70 million considering hyperinflation. Today's, today in Nevada, the incarceration rates stand out internationally as Nevada incarcerates more people than all NATO countries. There's 12 NATO countries at war right now, and Nevada incarcerates more people than the NATO countries at war. The state of Nevada places 48th in this nation for poor academic standards. The Board of County Commissioner claims that the existing Geolik facility is not sufficient to meet the needs of Douglas County and must needs expand its criminal operations without any facts whatsoever. Look at the court calendar. There's only three court sessions this month. Furthermore, since the COVID pandemic, most people are appearing remotely. They don't even go to, and I've got more, but we don't have time, but we're going to ask for the inoculation records of those city-elect who have been recently appointed to their commissioner boards. We want to know that they're COVID-ready, that they've been, that they've pacified the mandate of the federal government, and thank you.
Thank you. So before we go any further, I would want to indicate that I found nothing in that three minutes of public comment that had to do with this particular item on the agenda. So I would remind the public that your comments need to be pertinent to this particular agenda item. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gibson, Ms. Waller.
Thank you, Ellie Waller. I'm not saying that my stats are exactly correct, but as we were going through each, it looks like Commissioner Rice has 10 committees. I'm not counting alternates. I think it is in the best interest to have a smooth-running operation here, and that meeting attendance at the TRPA, I know that Commissioner Rice doesn't miss those meetings. meeting attendance at the TRPA, I know that Commissioner Rice doesn't miss those meetings, but it would be nice, like cross-training. We need to have some depth in this board, and I support Mr. Tarkanian's request to be on the TRPA board. It has some bearing of where you live, but we are a county under one umbrella, and I think it's a good time to start looking more at Tahoe. I was very, very dissatisfied, and I've been before this board already, about a couple recent approvals, and the executive director, Julie Reagan, at that board has also said they need to take a deeper look. So, I think a fresh face on that TRPA board. There is going to be brand-new commissioners from other counties on that board, and I think we should step up and do that as well. I don't know if anybody took the time to tally how many each of you have. Again, I think Commissioner Noah Sad is four with an alternative. Hales will be four if the water conservancy, we're looking forward to that. I'm sure Mr. Ingles will probably give that up. Mr. Tarkanian has two, and I think this TRPA board would be very well-served. Again, Mr. Rice has, or Commissioner Rice has 10, and Commissioner Gardner has five. I'm hoping that in the future, we could do some of these cross-things with that TRPA board. There's lots going on. I mentioned earlier in a comment that I think the MOU with the TRPA for our Tahoe area plan is stale, and that should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Since seeing none, we'll go to public comment online.
Thank you, Unis Galcelinas, for the record. This time, there is no public comment online.
Very good, thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. I'm thinking perhaps maybe we should take two motions. One to approve all of those except for TRPA, and then we'll come back to that, okay? So, I'll entertain a motion to approve everything that's already been penciled out versus, except minus, TRPA.
Second.
No, no, I'm not making the motion, I'm entertaining the motion.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Hales, to approve everything that's been outlined except for the TRPA appointment at this time. Since you no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes five to zero. Now, let's go back to the TRPA. So, we have a conflict here with one board. Commissioner Rice has indicated a desire to stay on the board, and Commissioner Tarkanian has indicated a desire to replace him as the primary on that board. So, further discussion by the commissioners, and then we'll entertain a motion.
What I wanted to add was, you know, there's some bearing to what Commissioner Rice says about being up in Lake Tahoe, but I've been asked by a number of people in the Lake Tahoe area to represent them on this board, and I think they see that the interest I've had and my work ethic and the fact that Mr. Rice, Commissioner Rice has been on for four years, I agree with Ms. Waller that it might be nice to have some different, fresh eyes and opinions that are on there, and that's why I made the request.
I'd like to hear from both commissioners, their vision for the work that they would do on that entity.
Okay.
Briefly.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to start that conversation. I am involved on several subcommittees and boards on the TRPA. I have established a good relationship with the staff of TRPA. I am totally familiar with the shoreline proposals. I'm thinking that without getting into a war with Commissioner Tarkanian, I think that his desire to be on this board has more to do with Glenbrook than it does with any other part of the lake. I would very much like to continue with my membership. Thank you.
Wow, that was a good one. I'm not even sure how Glenbrook would have any more bearing with TRPA than any place else. I think that was a very cheap shot, unwarranted, not true. But this is, it's a whole opinion of what the board thinks, that they think, hey, we should have somebody on there long-term, like we don't have term limits in the Congress, and just have people stay there, and they develop relationships with the people on the boards, they'll get along and go along. They don't raise questions, they don't ask important questions, they don't push issues that are important to the people in Lake Tahoe, they just want to get along, to go along, to get along, then they should stay with Mr. Rice. I'm not going to be there just to be a yes vote or to get along with all the people that are working on the committees. I want to fight for what's best for the people of Douglas County on the TRPA board, which is an important board. Listen, I don't have any problem with Wes as a county commissioner, but I do have, take great exception with his comment about Glenbrook, and I think that disqualifies him by itself.
Did that answer your questions, Commissioner?
Neither one of them told me what their vision is for TRPA in the next year or two, so that wasn't very helpful.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Commissioner Tarkanian to the TRPA.
I have a motion, but I don't have a second, so lacking a second, do I have an alternative motion?
What I'd really like to do is just pause this, and I don't have a feeling for either one of them. I hear from Commissioner Rice that he's built relationships there, and I hear from Commissioner Tarkanian that he would like to, that he has support at the lake, but I didn't hear from either one what their goals are on the commission, so I'm stuck.
Let me jump in there. We have been working diligently for the past four years to work on the shoreline project, to make sure that the projects that come before the TRPA are in the best interest of the lake, which includes tiers, which includes moorings, and the clarity of the lake. I have been involved in all of these projects, working on that, and I really envision in the next four years, great strides being made, and I, at this point, really am reluctant to give it up.
Well, and I guess that's the point. I mean, you've been on there for four years, and if these things, if you had the influence and worked with the board so well, they would be accomplished by now. Here, as you're saying, you need eight years to get these things done. I think after four years, you give somebody else a chance, and you let them work on it.
These things that we have been working on are long-term. Nothing is going to happen in the short term. It's the things that we do step-by-step, working diligently to make sure that the decisions that we make are for the betterment of the lake clarity, the work that we've done to make sure that the runoff into the lake is taken care of. All of these things are very important projects, and I'd really like to continue. Thank you very much.
So, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. How many people, what is the makeup of this board? Can you, can you tell me what the makeup is?
The makeup of the board is...
This is directed by NRS, is that right?
NRS, as well as California law. The makeup of the board is the, all of the jurisdictions around the lake, which would be, I can enumerate them if you wish, starting with Placer County and then working all the way around the lake, as well as appointees from the California governor, appointees from the Nevada governor, and we have appointees from the Attorney General's Office in California, and there are several members that are from South Lake Tahoe, as well as Eldorado County.
Well, you know, the decisions become easy when a commissioner doesn't participate in the boards he's been assigned to. You know, in the case like the Carson Water Subconservancy or the Carson Valley Arts Council and things like that, those become easy decisions when a commissioner, whether or not it's through their own fault or through other items that draw them away from that. But I only, you know, and I can understand and appreciate Commissioner Tarkanian's desire to have a new set of eyes and ears on that. However, I have a difficult time voting against somebody that has served on that for, and attended all the meetings and actively participated in that process, so just not necessarily inclined to change horses in the middle of the stream, so to speak, on that. But once again, we need a motion to go forward with that, so.
I, not having much to go on here, but the two responses as to what the vision is. I did hear something from Commissioner Rice that he would want to work on substantively, and I didn't hear that from Commissioner Tarkanian, although I think he would do a good job. But in going on one short answer off the cuff, which is all I have to go on, I will move that Mr. Commissioner Rice be appointed to the TRPA.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad, Commissioner Rice, to name Commissioner Rice to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency for another four-year Since you no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'll say aye.
No.
And they, okay, so motion passes three to two, and I believe that wraps it up, does it not, Mr. Cates? Okay. Okay, so before we go into closing public comment, I did have a couple of announcements. Can I make those now, Mr. Guti? I wanted to indicate our format for tomorrow, okay? Tomorrow, we have a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, starting at 10 o'clock, for the appointments of our 13 advisory boards and commissions. We're going to begin that at 10 o'clock. I do anticipate that hopefully a lot of those early ones that are on the, on the agenda that are incumbents or things of that nature, where we only have two for two positions, we can move through that fairly quickly. I'm hoping to include most of that by noonish, and then I, based on the weather, I would, I'm asking staff to bring in some refreshments for the commissioners, so we'll probably take a break then for an hour, and then come back and tackle the, I believe it's the library board, and then the planning commission, and then the airport advisory committee. So, bringing those forward in the afternoon. I believe that I've talked with the fellow commissioners, and we all feel and concur that we can probably get this done tomorrow, rather than have to come back to nasty weather on Wednesday, and that'll help the applicants as well, and count on getting it all done in one day. So, that's kind of the plan for tomorrow. Is there any questions in that regard? Okay, then, at this time, we'll go into closing public comment. Public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. Once again, within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners, please. Thank you.
Jason Gibson with the House of Gibson Foundation for the Law of Time. Fact-check, compare, please, at prisonpolicy.org. The state of Nevada places 48th in the country with regard to poor educational standards. I think there's a connection. The second-highest rate of death in Nevada is attributed to suicide, a majority of which are young adults or kids. Our local coroner personally told me that Douglas County likely has the highest rate of suicide in the state, and that was during the cremation of my parents. Nevada is the eighth-leading cause, Nevada is the eighth-leading state for suicide as the cause of death. The second-leading cause of death in Nevada are ages 10 to 34. The third-leading cause of death are ages 35 to 44. The fourth-leading cause of death are ages 45 through 54. The eighth-leading cause of death are ages 55 through 64. And finally, the 14th-leading cause of death are ages from 65 and above. Nevada has the second-highest suicide rate in this country compared to the United States as a whole. And you think building a new jail facility is going to fix it? Now, last week, we celebrated the second-year commemoration of the insurrection of this nation, which was entertained, you say it's outside of your jurisdiction. It's not outside of your jurisdiction. You brought Trump back here for a second time without notifying the people. You gave us three days' notice and brought in 25,000 pro-Trump NRA rednecks, talking KKK rhetoric, white supremacist rhetoric, for an administration which will go down in history as the most corrupt administration in the history of this country. You've got us involved in a powder keg here. It's the same powder keg that resulted in the death in Clark County. It's the same kind of environment in this commission with the way that this communication is restricted. That death that happened down there was from a city-elect who murdered a member of the press. I've got armed gunmen at my house at 1:30 at night, I can't get discovery, I can't get my notices across to public servants. I'm being fire-walled left and right for defending myself and my family, and I'm putting y'all's on notice that you're violating the law, that you're violating your pledge and you're violating your oath, that you've been locked unconsciously into a maladministrative organization, which is a corporate charter, which is unlawful, and it's illegal.
Additional public comment?
We're coming to an end of a meeting. I'd like to thank Commissioner Hales. This is a good example of how meetings have been run. You've attended, and I've appreciated. I'd like to thank everybody here that has chosen to run and serve. I want to thank all of the staff that participate in these meetings, the ones that are here and the ones behind the scenes. I would like to go back to the TRPA seat. There is a governor's seat assignment from Nevada, and maybe we should throw Commissioner Tarkanian's name on that seat. It is a 14-member board, plus a, I'm very familiar, spent 20 years as a public member there. Most of it was Shelley Aldine, who most of you know. She's still seated by Carson City, even though she's not a commissioner. So, again, there is some levity to be said for change of guard, and Shelley and I have a great relationship. I'm glad she's there, but it really is time, especially since the executive director there says they need to take a harder look. I'm not sure how we go about approaching the governor, if you're willing to take that seat. Each governor assigns somebody, and I'm not thrilled with the California one. Also, would like to state that when we go forward with the master plan, that the community plans, I am the broken record, they are so stale and out of date, and we were promised... They are so stale and out of date, and we were promised that they would get looked at. So before you do a master plan update, I would like the community plans to be prioritized above a master plan update. I think it's in fairness to your constituents that elect you, that the future land use maps were not qualified or quantified by the members of those communities, and we are stuck with how the developers get to use those as loopholes. I'm not against development. I have to say it often. I'm for good economic vitality, but it doesn't mean we should be putting bad projects in locations where they don't belong. Here as well is up in Lake Tahoe. Again, I'm reaching out to Commissioner Rice, who has served well there, but I've got issues with that board, and they believe that the Latitude 39 project should not have been approved. It was five against, and some of them really were conflicted on voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment here in chambers?
Hi, Robert Trumbly, the community again, business owner and an aviator. I wanted to bring up a little something about...
Can we... I'm sorry. Our clerk didn't get your name into the record, could he?
Robert Trumbly. T-R-U-M-B-L-Y. Some of the future planning and things that have happened in the past is worrisome. One of the things that happened in the past that got by a lot of folks is putting a recycling plant next to the airport. You know, simple things like this after the fact. When we have an AAC, we have a lot of these people that put in a lot of time for you guys to try to bring good, clear information for you to make decisions with. I think we're struggling with that. I think the AAC shows that, the lack of that problem right there of, you know, not letting you guys know how difficult that can be for aviators, drawing birds to an airport. That's what recycling plants do. We have bird strikes. We'll probably see a bird strike now. They'll be more frequent. We already have a lot of water fowl and stuff in our area. We don't need to exacerbate the problem. But with building in general, that's a good... It's a good point to look at. We're making some mistakes. So having the planning commission and the people, the discussion she just brought up, we have a lot of issues here. We need to have better committees, and I think more turnover with some of them. People, they get long in the tooth in some of these committees. Maybe they should have turnover and fresh eyes. I wish you guys would have thought about Danny being in that. I don't know him very well. I didn't vote for you. But we need... We need turnover for this, right? This is important stuff. So we need to... It's our community. We need to do more as citizens to keep your feet to the fire. We appreciate, and that's not disparaging. You guys do an enormous amount of work, and a lot of us appreciate it. Doesn't mean you can't do better, and we need to help you do that. So please appoint some people that are trusted, and let's get some turnover too. Think about that tomorrow with the AAC. I'll be here. I know a lot of other people will, but we need to help you a lot more in other capacities, not just the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here in chambers? If not, Ms. Gil Salinas, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Eunice Gil Salinas, for the record. At this time, there is no closing public comment online.
Okay. Very good. Coming back to the board. Any closing comments that any of you wish to offer? Okay. Commissioner Rice, if you would stay online for a few minutes. Don't leave exactly at the end of the meeting, please.
I can hang on. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. So with that, the meeting is hereby adjourned, and I would ask the commissioners to just stay in place for just a few minutes. We want to talk about emergency management with... Okay.